All right, I am going to call to order the school board business meeting December 20th, 8:00 AM. Could I please have a roll call bar?
Absolutely. Board Chair Pelletier.
Here.
Vice Chair Stivlin.
Here.
President Pearson.
Here.
Director Hefner.
Here.
Director Hubland.
I'm here.
Director Potacek.
Here.
You have four.
Thank you very much. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. District mission statement. Director Hubland.
The mission of the Stillwater Area Public Schools, in particular with students, partnership with students, family and community, is to develop curious individuals who are active and engaged leaders in an ever-changing world by challenging all students as they travel along with personalized learning pathways.
Thank you very much. And school board goals. Director Pearson.
Thank you. The Stillwater Area Public Schools Board of Education ensures outstanding learning opportunities for the social, emotional and academic growth of every student in the school district through authentic partnerships and meaningful communication with our community, parents and students. Every decision is made with a commitment to equity for all students and for future generations impacted by our actions. Our goals: We provide our stakeholders with regular updates on student achievement along with continual plans to enhance student learning in our district. We ensure that our systems of management and oversight are clearly defined. We invite ongoing dialogue and partnership with our community to learn from their knowledge and to enhance learning for our students.
Thank you. Item five is approval of the agenda. Could I please have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Director Stivlin.
Right.
And Director Hubland with the second. All those in favor, please raise your hands, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item six is a consent agenda, which includes the minutes of December 13th, 2018, this school board meeting, accepted gifts and donations 2018, dispersment registered December 15th through the 21st, and human resources personnel report. Director Potacek?
I would like to request that, under the consent agenda, item C be treated as a separate item.
Okay. And if you're okay with that, I'm going to move that to the end of the action items. That's okay with you?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
All right. So could I please have a motion and a second for items A, B, and D?
One moment.
A second.
Director Hefner with the motion. Director Pearson with the second. All those in favor, please raise your hands, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Action items number 7A, 2018-2019 revised budget, and I will turn this over to Ms. Hoheisel.
At the November 13th meeting, you had received a presentation as it relates to the 2018 through 2019 revised budget. I believe it covered the materials that you had had questions on at that time. You did have, I think, a relatively lengthy discussion on it. I have received no questions since that meeting, and so I am requesting the approval of the 2018-2019 revised budget.
Are there any? All right, so is that, that's a motion. Could I have a second, then we can go into discussion and question? Second by Director Alaklin. Any questions? Discussion, Director Potacek?
Yes. At our last work session, we went through a list of consulting costs by category. Where do those appear in the budget?
So, the way that report was pulled was specific to an object 305. When looking at, and I'll just lead you directly to the back of the book, so starting with expenditure by object, my apologies, I'm trying to find the page. Expenditure by object starts on page 16 of the revised budget book. When you look at the object number 305, you're actually going to see a range from 300 to 314, actually all crosswalks. So as we report it to UFRS, it rolls up as a 305, even though each individual category, we itemize it different, but the area of 300 to 314 rolls up as a 305, which should be reflective of that report.
Okay. So, the question I've got is this, is that there's kind of how much was spent in certain areas, and like you say, there's quite a range. I think the lowest I see in this is probably $24, and the highest is a range of teachers on call is, I think, just slightly over $100,000. So if there were certain consulting things that we did then that were not likely next year to do because of cost restraints or later in our discussion, how do they then, are they interspersed throughout?
I might be misunderstanding the question, so I'll respond one way and then just tell me if I missed it. When I look, for example, this year, for the finance office, we are required to do the annual audit, which is annual, and then we will also be doing an actuarial evaluation of essentially our post-employment benefits. That post-employment benefit, the actuarial study, is every two years. So you will see a budget of a certain dollar amount. It will be higher this year for 1819 than it will be next year for 1920, because I know that, you know, making up a number of $15,000, $20,000 won't exist next year. Is that directed?
Kind of. What I'm thinking of is this, is that as I look at those, and they're broken down here, district operations, security, and staff training, and again, some of those I can identify and say, well, this is what they were, and maybe they're one time. What I'm concerned about is that later on, when we're looking for places to look for cuts, if there were ones that appeared here, then where do they play out, or are they already taken out of this, which may be reoccurring items? Like, for example, there's one in here, I think it's the third item on the district operations that talks about teamwork's international, $20,000. So we did that. If we decide we're not going to do that next year, will that be reflected in our?
It would be reflected in your preliminary budget for 1920.
Okay. 1919, '20?
2019.
2019.
2019.
Yes. Effective July of '19, for that year's budget.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
And usually, you know, what it's done, and not necessarily picking out by a particular vendor, if it was, we are going to make a reduction of, and I don't know, teamwork's $30,000, you want to make a reduction of $30,000 in consulting, then that might be altered between, you know, we don't go by individual vendor, it's a sum that you work with to still achieve the results.
And it's not the huge ones, but I'm saying it seems to me that there are some there that are discretionary.
That was for the demographic study. So if you would decide that we didn't need demographic information anymore, then you would, you know, then you, obviously it would be a need and a cost that you wouldn't have to have anymore.
And I guess one of the things I'm getting at, and I think we come in today a little bit with that in mind, there are times that if you have a goal to be more frugal or austere, you're less likely to call on some of those that might appear. And so, how do we go about that when we're looking at budget adjustments or something?
Well, how you choose, I mean, that's ultimately up to the board's choice. Ideal, you could look and say, we spend this much, we've seen the list, at least the 17-18 list of who they are, we believe that there is this much money that we actually believe you can eliminate, and then we just eliminate that amount of money, and then we somehow figure out how to make it work with the vendors. That wouldn't be unusual. You also can go, and you would be presented with the impact from administration, if you do this, just realize these services won't be provided. Otherwise, I suppose you could go vendor by vendor. That's the board's choice. I would say it's probably more the industry norm for you just to give a dollar amount, and us to explain the impact of what that would be.
Yeah. And what I'm looking at is not necessarily some you realize you've got to do, and there are some that perhaps you'd say, okay, that served its purpose, it's not going to come up again. But sometimes there is, seems to me, discretionary. I don't remember a lot of these coming to the board before they were done. And so I'm saying, how do we get at that if, as we look through proposed frugal attempts, and we want to approach that, do we do it by vendor? Do we do it by need? Or do we need some other instrument in place to do that, or structure?
And I would, I would say that that's the board's decision to make. It would be our job to explain the impact of how you approach it.
Yeah.
Director Hubland, or, sorry, Hefner.
Aren't you suggesting that the board would say, we want to cut $50,000 from consulting, and then it becomes administration's directive, here are some places you can cut the $50,000? I think that's what she's getting at. You come up with a figure.
Okay.
Well, Director Potacek, I appreciate your question, because are you suggesting that we have the discussion prior to when the expenditure is decided upon?
Precisely. Can I just, could I clarify something on that? That's just coming to mind with the question, because, great question. The thing is, where the crosswalk thing, depending upon what the consulting piece is, it may not, it shows up as a consulting piece, but it may be a different area. Perfect example is things on the curriculum side. So anything in there that's on the programming piece, it shows up as a consultant, but it really is, it really is a piece of, for example, let's say it's, and I know we're not saying this, but let's say that we're talking about accompanists, or we're talking about lifeguards or whatever. If you just look at face value on that sheet, it shows up as a consultant expense, but it's really not, it just shows up because they're not employees. If we were to say, we want to, we want to cut consultants, and that was an area we chose, it's really the impact of the programming, it's really, it's really a function of the programming side, not a consultant side. So, I guess in my mind, when we start talking about make a reduction of X versus let's not do X, we probably need to backtrack more specifically, what are we talking about in terms of a consultant for, is the decision, and you brought up teamwork, is the decision we don't want to do demographical work, right? Or we want to limit that, because if we were to say that, then we could say, all right, to what, to what degree do we want to do demographic work? And is it that we just want to, we don't want to spend $20,000 on that, we want to spend $10,000? It'll still show up as a consultant fee of $10,000, but we're spending less, what the parameter is, is we're spending less money on it, is what we've decided, or you've decided as a board. It's figure out how, a perfect example is testing. So that, if you remember, we had that conversation about edgenuity, and then I brought up Apex. We believe we can make a reduction in that, it's not a consulting thing, but in that expense, but still be able to pull off at a minimum what we need to pull off and spend less doing it. That's really, when we get into the nuts and bolts of that consultant report, as I was looking through it, that's what came to my mind, is we've got to figure out, what are the areas that we just want to blanket say, somehow figure out how to reduce X here, and other stuff to say, we just don't want to do this, period.
Yeah, I think, I mean, it's kind of piggybacking on everything, all three. I feel like the situation we're in right now is something we need to work harder next time around to avoid. You know, we want to try to be upfront and make these cuts before, you know, before we, you know, when we're creating the budget, you know, to be proactive before we get to, so in other words, let's have a balanced budget next time. Let's really work at it. So I'm glad we're working on this now for next year, and I think, you know, I think that's kind of the idea. And the other piece is, you know, isn't it possible to, for us as a board to say, we want, we want to ask every department to cut a certain amount of money, and then you guys go back and figure out where the least, you know, least effective, you know, the most effective place to save, to find those savings? And then, you know, just kind of, because as a board, we have our goals of what we want to try to do, but we, we don't always know exactly what the impact is, if we're going to say, you need to cut this $30,000, or this $52,000, or, you know, it's hard to know, because we weren't part of the creation of the budget in the first place, and, you know, it's a learning curve at this point, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Director Potacek?
Yes, and, because I think you hit on why I'm interested in this, and as I count up the items, and I didn't count how many show up on these three or four pages, but I estimate there's probably about 50 in those pages, and it seems to me that three of those are over $100,000, and something like 13 of those are over $50,000. And I'm not ruling out what you just said, and that makes sense, if an item were to come up, and it's in that range, or, we don't always know what's discretionary, but it would be nice to know that ahead of time. And again, I don't think if we were in less frugal times, we'd need to do that with quite that attention, but I think, looking at $2.5 million, and even where we've tried to make some attempts, there's an awful lot of people advocating, not me. And so you look a little bit harder, and this is an area that I think might be in that consideration as well.
Absolutely. And a perfect example is how we attack the professional development in the curriculum piece, is exactly, Sarah, what you're getting at, and Mike, you're getting at, is Rachel and I took a look at those two budgets and said, okay, we can, we can get rid of this percentage of stuff and still pull off the bare minimum of what we need to pull off in the short term, which is, I think, what I hear you getting at, is, that's an example of us trying to figure that out on the programming side, is.
And I guess what I'm kind of hinting at, too, is that if there are ones that you perceive that are discretionary, you may build up a strong rationale, but in the end, it may come down to, do you or don't you? That may be something that you bring to the board for consideration.
Director Alaklin?
I think that we also have to be, you know, honest about the boards, from my interpretation, I think some mixed messages that we send our administration team, and again, I will recite the sequence of events that happened in our closed session, but we were all well aware of the impact, and we asked for recommendations, but then we want to change them. So I think the board has to be really clear going forward, because I think, I'm hearing different things from our board about what they want, and how much they want to get into the weeds of cutting this and that, and that's fine. I guess that's the board's discretion, even though it's not our role to be in management. But then I think we have to be really clear and honest with the team, so they know, so they're expending their resources in the most efficient way possible, because otherwise it's, it's really unclear, and it's wasting a lot of resources.
Thank you. Director Pearson?
Thank you. Kristen, can you go through, just, this came up in our budget, the consultants, can you talk through where teachers on call, where the different categories that's coming out of, because I think it's not, there's a little in that 305, if I remember you saying, and a little in 301, a little in 317. So I'm looking at that, especially in 305, that it's an increase of $318,000 from last year. Is that mostly teachers on call, or is that other?
I'm sorry, what code, Shelley?
305.
So that is, when looking, there are different categories, and in part, again, remember that this is for our internal purposes. Their request was, can we separate teachers on call, so individual programs or departments can track where, what's teachers on call for sick leave? What's teachers on call for special education? What's teachers on call for PD? Like, when are we calling subs in, and for what purpose are they serving, you know? And then, as far as like long-term subs go, that's not even in here, because that's, we moved that to a whole different category. So kind of the reason why it's divided out as it is, is individual requests of being able to track why we have subs, and what they're being used for, or used to cover. And so when looking at, just specific to, like, the teachers on call for 305, that's for professional development. If you were to look up to contracted services sub, that's for sick leave, that's 301. So there's different categories of teachers on call, because people have requested to be able to track it in a particular way.
Okay. So that increase, the $318,000 increase from this, from last year to this year, is that mostly teachers on call, or are there other?
Teachers on call, professional development.
Is mostly that, that difference?
Yeah, that's a good question. Can I just piggyback on that one? I do kind of feel the same way, like, I would really like to know exactly how much, I realize we've been told that there's savings from using teachers on call, but I would like to know how much we spent on subs overall before we had teachers on call, and then, and then after, just to see, I'd like to see a breakdown, if we could, at some point. I just think it's interesting, I know we had a problem before of getting subs, you know, in a timely manner for a lot of the positions, so I think we were kind of, really kind of holding it all together with strings or whatever, you know, before we used this program, and now it sounds like we're actually filling all those positions, so that seems like a lot better. But if we were doing okay before, it was probably cheaper. I mean, it just seems like if we were getting by with less, and, you know, having fewer subs because we couldn't get them, or because we were just trying to, you know, cover things any way we, any which way we could, that probably was cheaper. I'm just guessing.
I think you're right, Sarah. I mean, it was cheaper, because we had a lot of spots unfilled.
Yeah, yeah.
That was one of our, maybe, number one things that we heard, and Joe Siah can speak to this, too, but we, you know, not having a qualified person in the classroom puts extra strain on your teachers to help cover for that. And so we have, this is, because we have shared this information with the board before, we had that breakdown about what was the cost difference between using teachers on call. We also have shared the data on how it's improved the rate, so I think the governance question for the board is, when you look at to whom at what cost, is it more important for us to have qualified teachers in the classroom, or not use that service and maybe not have people in there? I think what we saw when we did the cost comparison is that it was very close, so it's not that you're going to find, you know, $50,000 savings by doing that. Your point goes perfectly on spot, Sarah, is you would probably see a savings, but it'd be because we don't have teachers in the room.
Yeah, I guess that would be just interesting to know at some point, like, you know, in, was it, last year, the first year we used this?
Yeah, started in February.
Started in February of last year. So, you know, for maybe the year before that, what did we, how many subs did we have overall? What, you know, sort of a little bit of a breakdown, and, I don't know, it's just, I think it would be interesting to know a little bit more about how that's working, and, you know.
Director, Director Hefner?
Yeah, I think if you prepare a report like that, it'd be interesting to make a comment on, like, how many times that came up at TAB, that there weren't subs in the classroom, what you had to do with negotiations, and the additional cost for paying elementary teachers when they picked up another elementary teacher's class. So now you've got 48 kids in a class with one teacher. Well, it's going to look cheaper, but is that really what you want? Do you want 48 kids in a class with an elementary teacher? Because you can't get a sub.
Right.
I mean, there's a reason why teachers on call is not creating as many problems as the previous one, that you'd say, well, let's save $50,000. But again, if our goal is to increase student achievement, I'm not sure that that $50,000 or $100,000 is the best way to do it. So I think, go back through the history of the whole thing, because I was on TAB for a few years, and others of you were probably on it during that time as well, but that was a constant that came up for a number of years, because we had a problem with subs. I mean, we could not get the subs. Elementary teachers were being asked to pick up for no cost their colleagues' class. It was crazy education, and so I think going to teachers on call saved us, in many cases, from what we had before. So I think the whole history would be important.
When we moved, when we started talking with teachers on call, they actually, when they come into district, they say, we're going to save you XYZ dollars. Well, we looked at the numbers, and we said, we don't think you're going to save us, we think we might actually break even, and we redid the analysis and didn't move on the assumption that we're going to save money. And in doing that, we actually cut a position in our district, in our department, that was focusing on subs to help offset that cost, anything that it might be, so there's actually a half position that's eliminated, because we went to that teachers on call as well. So, there's a lot, you don't pay workers' comp on those people, you don't pay unemployment because they're not our employees, you don't, you don't process the P rolls, you don't, so there was a whole bunch of, you had secretaries spending two hours a day, some days, finding subs in the mornings that they're not happy to do anymore, so, I mean, that's, those were all pieces we looked at when we decided to do that.
Director Hubland?
I think this whole issue of subs is, it's a different situation in secondary than it is in elementary. First of all, in secondary, you have a shop teacher who's ill, and you don't put a sub in there who's qualified to teach shop, then that becomes a study hall, and there's no instruction happening there, it's just supervised study. If you do, if you put subs in the wrong situations in a secondary curriculum and something happens, then you better build a new category here for lawsuits, because if someone gets hurt in there, in physical education, for example, someone gets hurt, and that sub in there is not qualified, and you directed that sub to teach that subject, and that student gets hurt, we're liable. Elementary, if you can't find a sub, it becomes a supervised study hall for the teacher who'd normally be teaching those 30, 25 students, and now she's a subs teacher, she's a study hall teacher basically for 50. So it, it's not an easy situation that you're dealing with, because I think what our goal still has to be, what's best for the students? What do we do that's best for students? Do we provide the best possibility, with subteachers, to be able to teach something in that class, rather than just sit there? Because if you have, if you direct them to do something that they're not qualified to do, you're opening yourself for a lawsuit with virtually no limit.
Thank you. Director Potacek?
Yeah, I, I think this is a good program. I think it's what we needed, we needed to do, and we did a couple of these things before as well. I do know we had some very loyal, long-term, long-term subs, sub individual people in the district who have been subbing for us for many, many years, and I know I heard some grumblings around town from some different people. And so for me, the question is not so much that this is an area that I feel like we should cut, I just would like to understand what the value is and what the actual costs are, you know, what we're, what, you know, do a comparison before and after, and then show all of the things that you've just been saying, you know, I think this is probably a better product, but I just feel like it would be nice to know more about it.
Yeah, one thing that, one thing that's going to be hard to look at is, so as I've been looking at the data from this year, you're not comparing apples to apples, because our subs this year were up 100 subs already from what we were last year.
Wow.
So you really can't compare.
It's huge.
And so, I'll try to get something that at least gives you some information that makes sense.
That would be great. I have a procedural question, if I could, right now. So a lot of times, and this has kind of been gnawing at me for a while, I don't know why I haven't asked before, and maybe there's not a specific answer, if that's the case, just say. But, you know, a lot of times on these budgets, it'll say, oh, where did I have it? Shift coding to object 5, like, here's one, shift coding to object 556, and then shift coding from object 550. What are the reasons why a code would need to be shifted?
New farce changes. So the Department of-
Is that always the reason why?
Usually.
Okay.
The Department of Education will create a new code. I'll use technology as an example. So, a few years ago, they never made, or they never wanted schools, or indicated it was a priority to track technology independent, right? It was just, it got lumped into another category. Then they can see, you know, whether it be legislatively, or there's enough information that says, okay, we believe it is responsible, or appropriate, or there's a grant, or something, that you create its own code. So what was once in, lumped into one category, now gets its own number, because the state has said, we think this needs its own number. Again, sometimes it's because there's grants coming, like, from the federal government or state government, and they're a few years, and then, and so they put a code to that, and then they disappear.
Okay.
And so then it goes back.
To something else.
So usually, when you see that, and they're, they're usually not ahead of us as far as planning for in the future year, we get, UFRS information actually can happen throughout the year, that they're saying, hey, this one is no longer valid- throughout the year, that they're saying, hey, this one is no longer valid, or we want you to split it out into these.
Okay.
And so we're transferring money between those to match what's going to be submitted to UFARs, for UFARs.
Yeah, it was funny, because I think there was one, it was like a code one twenty, I can't find it right now, of course, but, it was like one twenty was switched to one twenty-one, and one twenty-one was switched to one twenty, I'm like, okay, what is this all about?
Yes, that's, I would say ninety-nine percent of the time, it's the state of Minnesota asking us to track it differently.
Yeah, there's, yeah, okay, cool, thank you.
Anyone else? Director Patachik?
I have a question, if you go to the packet that we have, this is probably about five pages in, and what the pages show, and the page that I'm on, is the page where Carl's on top of the page, page five, it's under minutes in there, and if you go down the columns and you come to see two thousand and eighteen, nineteen revised budget, which is the item we're talking about now, eight, and two spots I want to go to, then if you go a little bit more than that, it says item D, and that's two thousand and nineteen, twenty budget adjustments, and I think I understand the difference between that, but what I want to go to is a very last sentence, and I, I don't debate that that wasn't said, but I just want to make sure I know what that means, and it says, it is not anticipated that the budget will be revised again for the remainder of the physical year, action will be requested at this meeting that we're having right now. We could still, a month from now, find things that might be actions that we would take that would affect those expenditures, but wouldn't have to show up in a new revised budget. Is that, is that accurate?
The answer is yes, that is accurate, what I would say is, back to their, with an approved budget, it sets, you know, a dollar limit of what you're spending, is there something that's, like, if you were to say back to, we're not going to do a conference, that's usually not coming from board action unless the board action says we're freezing all conferences, then of course it will be reflected.
In expenditures.
In expenditures at the end of the year, but it wouldn't necessarily be what is-
Yeah, but you can still do those kinds of things hypothetically, that's what I'm saying. Like, for example, if the board took the position that when openings developed in the rest of the school year, they wouldn't be filled, or, or maybe that's too strong, maybe they'd be reconsidered, and say that had a hundred thousand dollar impact, you're not stopped from doing that, you can still do those kinds of things.
That's correct.
Okay, and then, why I went to that very last one is because, and, and I, this may be a redundant question, the very last paragraph there talks, while the list of recommended adjustments is short of the two point five million goal, the board may continue to discuss, because I'm saying the same kind of thing, and that's what we'll get to when we get to item B, whether we want to make any modifications on that list, that tentative list that we're looking at.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I, I did, and I'm just going off of previous history, just based on a series of emails that has happened, and I, hypothetically, so, I, I don't think it's any secret that there's, there's been a lot of questions about administration and cutting administration, so, I think a lot of us can see the writing on the wall. I would ask that the new board, if that really is a direction that they're going to go, and we want to, and that ties beautifully into your question, that needs to be clear enough front, so that they can have the most time and preparation to, to, to make those cuts in a real, as thoughtful and intentional as possible can, because it will disrupt a lot, but I think that, you know, we're talking around this, and, like I said, based, I'm just going off based of what I've been reading over the last month, it's very clear where some things are headed, and so, I just ask for transparency.
All right.
I agree.
Thank you. Director Hefner?
I agree with what she said. If everything we do here today is going to be undone, then why are we here?
Thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, we have a motion and a second, time for the vote, all those in favor, please, of the revised budget, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Aye.
One in dissent, motion carries. Moving on to item B, two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty budget adjustments. Denise, Director Superintendent Contrelli, I think starts it out.
We've had many work sessions, and we're moved to talk about our finances and where we are, and last time we met, we talked about the options that you have, one is to cover the deficit with the, part of your fund balance, two is to make some adjustments to be able to lessen the impact on the fund balance, three is to try to attempt to have your expenditures and revenues meet and match, and then the fourth is to go deeper, if you want to rebuild that fund balance from approximately about three point nine to the five percent board policy. We've shared with you, and had lots of discussion on that list that you have, and so it's up to the board whether you'd like to discuss those again and vote one by one, or what the processes you'd like to do to move forward and, and make recommendations.
All right, I'll go to Director Olaklin, I wanted to just, first of all, just make a brief comment, this has been an excruciating process, none of us want to be here at this time, I appreciate the, the work that the principals put into this, no one likes to have to say what, what they can handle cutting, and what they can handle getting rid of, and, and this and that, I appreciate the work of Ricky Michael, and I know that Josiah has been phenomenal and weighing in as well, so I'd like to thank all of these stakeholders, and at the end of the day, we are also responsible to our stakeholders, which is the taxpayers, and a lot of them don't, don't have, know what intricacies are going on here, so I'm going to go right to Director Olaklin.
Thank you, Director. I'd like to make a motion, please, that we make the following cuts, from PD, and curriculum budgets, each by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, all of these, by the way, are, are on your sheet, for a total of five hundred thousand dollars. We can remove the capital, that's removing the building level allocation for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and facilities and operations, reduce the cleaning, maintenance, grounds and supplies.
Okay, can you slow down just a minute?
Oh, sorry. I thought we were doing it in order, it's coming. Okay, are you on this one? So, the first one, the five hundred thousand?
Keep that one.
Cut.
So we would cut that.
Yep, keep that in the cuts.
Okay.
And then under capital, the building level allocation for a hundred and twenty-five.
Okay, so you're skipping over the two in between there?
Yeah, the one I'm, I'm highly, the ones-
For further consideration or something.
Right, I'm making a motion to include these in the cuts.
Okay.
Operations and facilities, the cleaning, maintenance, ground, supplies for seventy-five thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
The district-wide user pay, or, I'm sorry, user of fee pay, that's fifty-two thousand dollars.
District-wide user of fee pay picks up fees for the credit card.
Correct.
So fifty-two thousand.
Operations and facilities, increasing the fees for the facility rental, that's forty thousand dollars. Supplying materials for twenty-four thousand dollars. And then, one that's not on here, but, ten thousand dollars from the board budget, and the board can have discretion how they would like to find that, but I've stated publicly many times, I think it is, I'm not comfortable asking everyone else to make cuts if we as a board aren't willing to do the same. So that brings a total to eight hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars.
Can you just clarify, memberships and contracts, was that on there, thirty-five thousand?
No.
Okay, so that one you're not, but the supply and the materials you are.
Correct, for twenty-four thousand, and then ten thousand dollars from the board budget.
So can I re, can I repeat what I think I have? Okay, this is Director Olaklin's motion for reductions, five hundred thousand for professional development curriculum, one hundred and twenty-five thousand under capital, which is remove building level allocation, seventy-five thousand from operations and facilities, which is reduce cleaning, maintenance, grounds, supplies, fifty-two thousand from district-wide, district-wide user fee of, fee pay picks up, so additional fee for the credit card. Operations and facilities of forty K, forty thousand, increase fees for facility rental, twenty-four thousand supply in materials, reduce building supply budgets, board budget reduction of ten K to be decided upon as the board sees fit, if that's accurate?
Mm-hmm.
With a grand total of cuts of eight hundred and twenty-six thousand, is that accurate?
Correct.
Okay. Can I have a second on that?
I'll second that if no one else will, and, do you want to have a discussion?
Yeah, I think for discussion, we probably should-
Director Pearson?
Thank you. We should have discussed procedure, I think, before, I would guess I would rather, since so many things are being dropped from this, go one by one and see where we can land, but this is only eight hundred and twenty-six thousand.
Anyone else have a?
I agree.
I think that, yeah, sorry.
Director Stivlin?
I'm a little bit worried, I, I sort of appreciate the attempt at finding some efficiency by doing it like this, but I'm already thinking of a couple of things I would want to, I think we could really get into the weeds really fast.
All right, so why don't we, Director Olaklin?
So, just some context behind the motion and what I did, and I fully own that I was not able to, that I had to depart early from the last budget meeting, which, you know, that is on me, so I, I realize I was not part of those conversations, so I did not have a voice, and I'm fine with that. That being said, as I've been researching these, I don't feel that a lot of these were, from my perspective, necessarily done with a full on equity lens, and I think that, again, we as a board made a decision to spend our money where we wanted to spend it back in June, that this is now kind of where we're at, and we have a fund balance, and I think that the, the board should consider using that to cover, cover the rest, I don't think our students and staff should have to bear the brunt that we're asking them to bear for our decision.
So I have a question, so, that was my question to this, what, what was your recommendation then for the rest of the budget cuts, was my, what I was going?
Well, I think that's up to the board. I'm just, I'm just proposing that we, we, for myself, that, or for that motion, that put those cuts to move.
Okay, all right, Director Stivlin?
Would it be possible for us to consider, because I think many of us feel the same ways as you at this point, Paula, because we've heard some really incredible feedback from our community, and from our, from various different sources, and I think we've been given a little bit more time to consider some of these cuts that we were tentatively considering earlier, I know I have changed my mind on a couple of things, so, would it be possible for us, instead of thinking of them in this one big group, to actually take them one by one and vote on them as individual items? Would that maybe be more efficient?
Director Olaklin, you can either withdraw your motion, or we can go to a vote for that amended or go to a vote.
Yeah, what is the rest of the board think?
Director Hefner?
Well, just, I, I'm sure some of others of you got a request from the Pony Express, they wanted to know about the budget cuts, so, in doing that, kind of going back to budget cuts, not just the time I was on the board, but even further back, just a little historical context, I found out, which I was a little bit surprised at, but, of the last seventeen years, five of those seventeen, there were no budget reductions, twelve of the seventeen there were, and of those budget reductions, the range was two hundred thousand to four During two of those times, the unreserved fund balance went down to two point five one year and three point oh another year. I mean, it was kind of interesting when you look at a, instead of looking at one or two years, when you look at seventeen years, and that's kind of what I passed on to the person from the Pony Express, but, I, I found it kind of interesting that two of the five years when there weren't budget reductions were twenty sixteen, seventeen, and twenty seventeen, eighteen, and I think before we get, you know, all wound up in, oh my God, how did we get to this point, I, I think part of the reason we got to the point, when you look at the history, is we didn't have budget reductions in the last two years, and there's kind of an inevitability, as you look at the history of seventeen years, that if you spend money, and one way is on contracts, if you spend money, inevitably you're going to have to cut someplace eventually, and so I just want to throw that out as a, keep it in mind as, as we play with these budget cuts, and a, and a fund balance that's anticipated to be about four and a half million dollars, a fund balance in July, if I'm right by your Don't, we can get hung up on a lot of stuff here, but just keep in mind that if you look at history, there, there has to be, seems to be, there has to be cuts occasionally, and there is going to be four and a half million dollars in the fund balance in July. You know, if you went down to three, or you went down to two and a half, it wouldn't be the first time it was ever done in this district, just a little history.
Can I ask a question, Paula, so we're at one point seven then left, if we, if we, if this motion passes and the eight hundred, eight twenty-six total, so then that would take the fund balance down to what?
Two eight.
Okay. And then, Director Hefner, you just said that it's been down to, what, two, five?
Two and a half was the lowest one I found.
Okay. Okay, Director Patachik?
Yeah, a couple of things, number one, and I want to consolidate a little bit here of what I've heard, number one, to me personally, I'm only one of seven, a five percent fund balance is a goal I think we ought to seek, and, and as George says, even when you look at it historically, it has varied from that, but I'm saying, all you do is push off the decision to somebody else if you move away from that five percent, and I think in the long run, it gets harder, it doesn't get easier, it gets harder. Having said that, Paula, I, I like what you did here, I respect what you did, I think in terms of efficiency, though, I'd rather revisit item by item, and also with the stipulation that as you did, you added an item, there may be other items that any other board member could say, okay, how about this, could, could we reintroduce those, so, I'm saying, a lot of the things you proposed, I'm okay with that, and I don't know where the rest of the board members are, but that's why I think it'd be better to look at it individually than as one composite package.
Director Stivlin?
I agree with you, I thought you said that very well, thank you. I also do want to say, I appreciate that you were trying to find efficiency by coming up with this plan, Paula, I, I think it was a good idea, I just feel like we might be better off looking at it item by item, and then as we go along, if we think of things we want to add, or change, or whatever, it might be easier to do that when we're just talking one thing at a time, and then the follow, the other thing I want to say is, I, I don't know that, so, we're working on, I mean, I guess the question of what we can do about the current budget, you know, is up in the air a little bit, how much control we have, we're trying to find savings right now, in this moment, going forward in this year, I guess that remains a question in my mind, I haven't really heard a definitive answer, really, one way or the other, but this is for next year, so technically, I mean, technically speaking, we have until June thirtieth when that, or, you know, when that has to be submitted to the state, it's, starts July first, so I feel like we don't have to get all of the cuts like right now, I feel like we have more time than, than we think we do, we can spend a little bit more time, we can get partway now, and then keep coming back at it and work on what this budget should look like for next year.
Okay, you're, you're saying two, just two contradictory-
Okay, you're saying two, just two contradictory things here between Director Patachuk and Stivlin. I just wanted to make note of that, that you have, it looks like you have a little differing opinions. I'm ready to-
Wait, what do you mean?
Well, Director Patachuk commented that we can't kick, the more we kick it down the road, we have to make the decision, and you just commented-
I'm not saying that. I'm not saying-
Okay, so can you clarify?
I'm saying we don't have to get to 2.5 million today. I'm saying we can get to as far as we can get to today and make some cuts and decide on that.
And then kick it-
And then decide in, you know, January, meet again, and keep working on this. We haven't till, you know-
So just take time, take-
Okay. We can keep working on this until we have the final budget, which has to be approved in June, right?
Right.
Certain things have to be done now.
Right. Remember, our only deadline was that if there was a big change that would impact staffing, because staffing starts right away, that we need to know that. I mean, that's really what we need to know so that we can do that.
Director O'Loughlin?
No, I think my question was similar to Jennifer's. So you're saying take a little more time so that this current board wouldn't make a decision that, on the totality of the two, five, though? That you, that you-
Well, we can at this point.
We can.
I mean, today, I guess we can, but you're wanting to go down to eight hundred thousand. So how can we possibly get to two and a half million with this board?
All right, I think we should call a vote on this and then move on.
Can I make a comment first?
Yep, go ahead, please.
About the board budget seems unfair, asking the board to cut one-third of their budget. We can go down in the board budget, but I think to ask the board to cut one-third of their, so I would like you to reconsider an amount there.
I think, I think we need to consider these items one by one.
So that's why I just said, let's call for a vote on this. So all those in favor of Director O'Loughlin's motion, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion fails two to five. Now, let's, I am in favor of going line by line on this as well, so why don't we start by going at the first one? Professional development, reduce both PD and curriculum by 250,000 and move building PD back to district for distribution. Why don't we have a motion and a second and take the vote on that?
I'll move on that.
By Director Stivlin, a second.
I'll second.
Director Pearson on the second. Any comments, questions, deliberations on that? All right, if not, let's take a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye. Who's opposed?
Aye.
Director, you're in opposition?
Yes.
Okay, Director Heflin is the one dissent. The motion carries six to one. Item number two, programming, increase nine, twelve staffing ratio and reduce extra requirements at the high school. Can I have three hundred thousand?
That's been changed. That was changed. It's not the programming.
Just increase nine to twelve.
Oh, you're right, you're right. Oh, yes, it was. So mine still says nine, twelve staffing, okay. Okay. High school, so high school only, correct. Thank you for that. High school only ratio and reduce extra requirements. Could I have a motion and a second?
I would like to make a motion that we do not include this cut.
Okay, and a second?
I'll say.
So we're going backwards on the motions now, we're saying don't want it instead of we do?
Why don't we just make a motion that we remove? I agree.
We remove this item from the list.
Let's stick with affirmative motions, and then in the vote is where we'll get to the answer, right? All right, so can I please have a motion to increase the high school staffing ratio to the tune of 300,000?
Well, I'm going to make a motion.
Sorry, is that the correct number now, that this was incorrect? Okay.
I want to make a motion because I want to hear arguments for why we shouldn't do it.
Okay, motion by Director Hefner, a second. I'll second it. Second by Pelletier, discussion. Director Patachuk?
And I'm going to the last meeting, and you helped me on this question because you said what this represents is three teachers.
Well, it was Bob's, right, about three teachers for that K-12 staff.
Yeah, but I think you put it in terms that it made sense to me more clearly than as it previous read. And I appreciate you pointing that out.
Director Pearson?
I just want to ask a question of Dr. McDowell, if you can give us a picture of what that might look like at the high school.
So by increasing the staffing ratio, roughly to do, to get a picture, if you, if we follow our line of thought, that an FTE, so not a singular person, but an FTE equivalent, so, because you could have two people that are half-time, you could have, you could have certain areas in the building that only require a .5 person here, currently a .5 person here. So that's the first thing to clarify, is it isn't necessarily talking three full people, it's talking three FTE equivalents. So the idea being, as we've talked before, that we increase the ratio, it essentially reduces, if it's at 106 FTE right now, it reduces it to 103, for example. You then let the high school administration decide where that FTE is taken from, because it may not mean you're down one full English teacher. What it might mean is, just like we're having the discussion here, where would the least impact be if we reduced this area? If we reduced this area, part of this area? That's how it is anticipated to play out.
Director Hefner?
And my concern is, since we're, I think we've opened it up to adding some items to this, if we're going to increase any ratios, if that's in somebody's mind is that we can get some dollars by doing it, I would just push for, don't increase elementary ratios. We've already voted, I think, to not increase middle school ratios at the previous meeting. If we're going to increase ratios anywhere, I think the K-12 staff would even say, give it to us rather than give it to elementary. I think they realize if kids come to them prepared, their job is easier than if you've cut elementary to a point where those kids aren't prepared, and now the job at the high school becomes greater. So I don't necessarily believe that we should increase the staff, but if somebody's going to come up with a proposal later, well, let's increase elementary, then I would not be in favor. One other thing, in looking through the history, the last time I believe that we did anything, we increased the elementary ratios and we decreased the secondary ratios to the point where in, I'll say, 2014, 2013, I don't remember the exact year, we added about four and a half teachers at the high school. So I think that's important, again, take a look back at history and see what you've done. But my biggest opposition to this is, I'll vote to not do it. I, you know, obviously, increasing staffing ratios doesn't make for good education, probably, but I don't want us later than to come back and say, but we could do seventh and eighth grade, or we could do K-6. So if that makes any sense, I don't want to do the younger kids, I'd rather do the older kids, I guess.
So you want a clarification on whether-
No, I just, I just, I'm just kind of throwing it out there, saying, I'll vote to not do this, which I think is a sense for a lot of board members, but don't then come up later to say, well, we need some money, let's increase elementary, or let's cut elementary intervention or something like that. I mean, just be careful, by saying no to this, what it means later on for saying yes to something.
Director Stivlin?
Thank you for sharing those thoughts, Director Hefner. I appreciate that. History is especially, I think I do remember just a couple of years ago, there was a little bit of a surplus, and that board at that time made the decision to create some staffing available at the high school because the class sizes were so big, and they decided that that was an important place to look at, trying to, you know, improve. Personally, I think it's no secret, I'm a small class size advocate. I feel like the smaller our class sizes are, the better it is for our students. And we have collectively agreed that we want to make these budget cuts as far away from the students as we possibly can. And I just can't think of anything that would come before cutting teachers, when the teachers are in the classroom. You know, to me, that's the last place you should go, the very last place you should go at any grade. And I agree with you, it's most important at the elementary level. It's not as important at the high school level because kids are so much more complex and capable of handling things on their own so much more. But I completely oppose this plan. I think I opposed it last time we looked at this. And I think we want to keep our class sizes small because we know that's really good for students. And I agree with you, I don't think we should cut at any level the staff, or increase the staffing ratio or cut staff.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to make a quick comment, just for the public, that just process-wise, I appreciate the people who are making the motions and the seconds just to keep this process fluid. It doesn't necessarily mean that the vote is going to go in the affirmative. So I just wanted to make that crystal clear for the public, that I appreciate this process that we're taking. I appreciate my fellow board members for making these motions and seconds, just so we can get this conversation going. Director Heflin?
One thing, I want to go back, I didn't vote right on the first one.
I was wondering if I, yep, I was wondering if that-
I was looking a different column.
That's okay. So would you like to just kind of rescind that? So you, that would be a 7-0 for the 500,000 for the professional development?
Right.
Okay.
Now, the other thing I wanted to speak about was the increase in nine, twelve staffing. I cannot honestly support that, because what happens, high schools have required courses, but they also have electives. And sometimes electives get discarded because there aren't enough students. But there are enough students where the elective should be given. You know, for example, let's say that we did something like add Chinese to our curriculum. Chances are that you'd be lucky to get maybe 12 to 15 students the first time. Should we offer that as a curriculum requirement? Yes, I think we should. But there are some hidden issues here that will impact our elective program.
I appreciate that. All right.
Can I ask a comment?
Yep.
Based on procedure?
Yep.
Another way that we could do this is if there wasn't a motion for something, or we didn't get a second, then it doesn't go forward, right?
Yeah, George just wanted to separate it.
We could, right, we could, yeah.
I just wanted to clarify that, too.
Yeah, we could do that. I think we also like to have the discussion, so that was a way of doing that.
I appreciate that.
All righty, so all those in, okay, so just to clarify, this is a motion to increase the staffing ratio with a second. So all those in favor of increasing the staffing ratio, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye. All right, all those opposed, raise your hand, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion fails.
Sorry, I was a nay.
Zero to seven, motion fails. All right, on to administration support staff. Restructure department responsibilities, 200,000. Can I have a motion and a second, please?
I'll so move.
Director Patachuk with the motion?
Second.
Director Stivlin with the second. Any conversation? Director Stivlin?
I did a little checking on a couple budgets in years past. I think it was back to the revised 16, '17, which had the actual numbers were 15, '16. And listed in code number 100 in that budget, the administration costs were 1.36 million. And what's listed in that same code now is 1.69. So between the actual numbers of 2015, '16, and what's listed in the current revised budget is $330,000 and 322 cents. That's just the one admin code, 100. There's also a couple of other codes listed as supervisors, 120. The increase in the same time period is 209,000. Specialists, 121, the increase is 141,000, and coordinators is also increased about 15,000. That's a huge amount of increase in just a couple of years. And what I would like to propose is that I think we can find more than what has been proposed here in administrative costs. I would like to propose that we ask administration to find a savings of 500,000 in their budgets of administration and slash support staff.
So I have a question that, when we were going through these, this is the first time I've heard that suggestion, so I don't, I'm concerned that, have we had a discussion about this, and what would that look like? Because we haven't really talked about that, and to, with the increase. So I'm a little concerned personally, can you speak to that off the fly, I guess, what that might look like?
Which one?
The one we're on right now?
The initial question is the 200,000, I think that-
The increase to 500.
Well, initial 200,000, if you remember, the board, when it first came in 2015, added 200,000 because they recognized that teaching and learning needed more support. What that position looks like is our personalized learning position is the one that was added, and that was to address and help support EL, gifted and talented, mental health, and our multi-tiered systems of support. It used to be what Director Larson did. So that position was added for those supports because it was understood that those were systems that needed to be built within the school district. So that is the initial. Also, we have a position that was added this year to help support the social, emotional, and behavior issues that we're having specifically at the elementaries, but also working with middle school and high school in the implementation of those green rooms and providing safe places for our students and for our staff. And so those are the two, off the top of my head, there would probably be some tech support, supporting those positions, that would also be part of that 200,000 initial.
And then an increase up to the 500, any idea?
Well, this is, you know, this is the first time we've really heard about that, so I prefer not to throw that out there because we can't make, give you an informed decision about what that would be. We've been looking at the 200,000.
Okay, Director Stivlin?
And just to be clear, I'm not expecting that. I'm throwing it out there because I want to keep considering this as we go forward. I would like to see what that looks like.
So are you requesting an amendment to the 200,000?
Yes.
And instead make that to 500,000? Is that what you're requesting?
Yes.
So we would need to vote on that. All those in favor of that, please?
Well, can we discuss first?
Sure, I mean, we can discuss, I guess.
I mean, I don't know if-
I think, I think you bring up a good, a good point. I think Denise's reply at this point, it makes sense, is that if there was an additional 300,000, they'd like to go back first and say, what's this going to look like in their application? So I think at this point, the amendment's a tough one to look at. We may end up today with a figure of a million and a half, we may end up with a million, but perhaps today's not the last day we're going to look at trying to reach that 5% fund balance that I'm in favor of.
So then, can I just clarify then? Instead, I would, since we want to vote on the 200,000 today, is there some way that we can say, I would like further consideration or get more information about additional savings?
I absolutely-
So that could come possibly, I think, second round of cuts?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I guess that's what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
Or what I'm, what I'm thinking is, on the very bottom here, we could have almost like suggestions, other things we want to look at, but not today.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
So then, would you like to take back your amendment and-
Well, I don't think I made an amendment really yet.
Okay, so you just were saying I want off it to 500.
I'm just saying, I want this to be also considered, yes.
Okay, Director O-, Director O'Loughlin, and then we'll go to Director Hefner.
Sarah, I appreciate the transparency about, you know, kind of where you wanted to go with admin. I think that, you know, just it's going to be really important for the board to do their due diligence. There are so many, so many state and federal mandates that our staff are responsible for. I'd be really cautious that, you know, I think about, you know, as a hospital, right, you have your doctors and your nurses doing the work with the patients. If there's no one kind of managing the systems, that's going to have an impact on the safety and efficacy of how they can serve their students or their patients, and I don't think it's any different in any system. So I think that, I remember back to past history when teaching and learning was gutted, and I think we're, we are just now at a point on the precipice of building some, finally, solid structures and systems that are benefiting our teachers and our students. Are we going to see the results in a year? Of course not. But if we never let things take root and blossom and we just keep cutting it off at the trunk, there's going to be ramifications. So I just encourage the board to make sure they do their due diligence.
Thank you. Director Hefner?
You know, the board did pass a budget that said X amount for increases for staff. Some of us knowing full well that we would probably- Some of us knowing full well that we would probably get to a point like this where we would be cutting budgets. I think it's just as important to recall that the board said, we want to get our employees to average, whether it's paraprofessionals, or it's people in teaching and learning, or it's people in finance, or wherever, that we wanted to get people to average. So when we take a look at all the figures down the road, and some of us won't be here, when you take a look at those figures, realize that the board at one time, a recent board, said, we wanted to get everybody to average. And the increase cost is part of wanting to get everybody to average. So it's, I don't want to say it's on the board. The increases all aren't on the board, obviously, but part of the increase in money that you noted there was because the board made the decision at the time, a different board than you're going to have going forward, but that board did make that decision.
And I appreciate, can I just quickly...
I appreciate that, and I respect that. But obviously, you know, those decisions were made at a time when finances were different, and now we have to find cuts. So, you know, we have to make that decision of where's the best place to make those cuts. So I do appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, we are going to take this to a vote. So all those in favor of the $200,000 cut to restructure department responsibilities, please raise your hands, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, and those opposed, say aye.
Nay.
Or nay, sorry. Motion carries five to two. Capital, remove building level allocation, 125,000. Could I please have a motion and a second?
I'll move.
A second.
Director Patachek with the motion, Director Pearson with the second. Any comments, questions?
Yes, one of the things I'd like to do is, this is why I made the motion, is that, one, we need cuts, frugality, and this will help us get there and step in that direction. I think also, though, what was important was at our last meeting, the principal of the high school got up and spoke and felt that a lot of the cuts that were being out there attacked secondary, particularly the high school, but more so than others. I think that what this one does is say, okay, we're going to look across the board and try to equalize this. Again, I think it's a step removed from the classroom, which is a good thing. Will it hurt? You bet. Everything on this list will hurt somebody. And so in that light, I'm saying, I've weighed that. I think this is an area where we can make another step in the right direction.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, all those in favor of the 125K, remove building allocation, please raise your hands, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Programming, remove YCAP, alternate suspension program, 107. Anyone want to make a motion? I'll make a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, Director Stilin on the second. Discussion, questions? Director Patachek?
You know, and last time we looked at this, I went with the area to cut this. Here's why I'm opposed to that. I think, one, is this will significantly affect the work life of principals and assistant principals a lot, because it takes something out of their tool chest. Again, what you do is, the result, the practical result, if you remove this program, you're going to have more out-of-school suspensions. And you're going to have some situations where kids are going to be sent out there, and they're going to be out of a supervised setting. And so I'm saying, all the individual phone calls that you make and say as a principal, and anybody who's been there, has got to get contact with a parent, and guess what? For one day, two days, whatever the suspension is, the kid's going to be home, you've got to take care of them. The difference, as I believe Mr. Bach pointed out, was that when it's in the program here, the YCAP, they're supervised, it's educational, the kid is in a supervised study hall, so to speak. And that's a better setting. We know where they are, they're part of our responsibility, and we haven't passed it back.
Director Heffner?
And I would say, if this is really a 6 through 12 program, because it's all, you know, it could impact the middle schools, somebody is going to end up being in charge of that kid. You know, odds are it'd be a paraprofessional that ends up being put in charge of the suspension at three buildings. So are you really going to save $107,000 if somebody gets put in? I mean, I would hope that it wouldn't just be a kid sitting in an assistant principal's office for six hours for the day. So if you've got three buildings impacted, potentially, you could have three different people replacing the one person you have at 107,000. It doesn't make any sense to me.
Director Stilin?
I agree. I was pretty opposed to this suggestion when we talked about it earlier. I believe in the power of restorative justice, and I think that the YCAP program really does represent our district's attempt to do just that. And I feel like it's a really important program that we need to keep.
All right, Director Pearson?
Sorry, I just have a question. Is there any way to restructure it to bring some cost savings?
At this point, no. Here's the... So in order to provide the services we provide, we need to have a licensed teacher, and we also need to have someone who, at this point, is dual-licensed with special education, so that what we're able to do is meet the guidelines for that when we have students go there. So this is, it's about as bare bones as it could get at this point. Anything that we would do, I don't know how we would, it would change how we would be able to offer it and who we would be able to offer it to.
Right, it'd have to be offered in the building, probably, because currently.
Yeah.
So what about, do you know how many days of the 180 we are using that there are kids in the program?
Not off the top of my head. I know it averages just about two kids a day if you spread it across. It depends. Like, the last couple weeks, it's been pretty full. I know that there was a week this fall where it, there just, there wasn't a lot going on in that realm.
So probably not that it would make enough difference for that teacher to be a sub on days that there's no students. There's probably not enough days for that.
No, and the other part of it, too, I think that we have found this year in particular, is the teacher we have in there right now does a lot of work with trying to figure out new curriculum for when we have kids in there. For example, I know that she's working on a Schoology site that has, that has things particular or specific to different behaviors. So if it's a vaping thing, there's a curriculum for vaping. If it's a fighting thing, there's a curriculum for fighting. So she's working on that. It's unique to have it, but that's, I don't know that we could plan on the teacher doing anything more than helping out with the transitions program if there truly wasn't anything going on.
Which I appreciate. And I think the program has a lot of value, but it almost sounds like a class size of two is what it averages, and that's hard to swallow when you have some really big ones in other places.
I think ultimately, the trade-off ends up being to what George was talking to, and I think we talked about this last time, is it will have an impact on the secondary buildings as far as they'll have to figure out, how do we do this? It will also cause an increase when we get that report at the end of the year, the number of kids that are suspended, because the...
If we don't have it.
If you don't have it, the number of kids that go there at the secondary level truly are kids who we would otherwise be suspending out of school. It really isn't your in-school suspension kid.
I, thank you for the questions. I had the same, so I appreciate you jumping in there with those. Director Patachek?
As a former building principal, put that ahead, how would you look at this?
As a building principal in a previous district that had a similar program, it's a great, programmatically, it's a great program for kids. The hard part, what you've alluded to, is, is if you're truly going to go down the efficiency route when you're talking kids to staff, if that's the only thing that we're worried about, then you're going to have a pretty easy decision to make, because it's going to seem inefficient. If we're talking about the opportunities for kids when they get into a situation that would otherwise have them home, I think it's a great program to have for kids, particularly if you're able to figure out additional ways to build on the restorative piece.
And it sounds like in the present situation, we have someone who really makes the most of it.
Yeah, she's really working hard to do that, but there's a cost to it.
All right, Director Hockland?
Yeah, I'd like to call the question and we take this over.
All those in favor, please, of the cut of the 107,000 to remove YCAP, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye. Those of...
Are you voting to remove?
Or are you voting, calling the question first?
I'm sorry, the motion was to remove the alternate suspension program, so thus cutting 170, or 107,000. So again, the motion is to remove the program. That's what we're voting on. So if you're in favor of this, you are in favor of removing YCAP. Is that, are we on the same page?
Correct.
Okay. So again, if, all those in favor of removing YCAP, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, raise your hand, signify by saying aye. So motion fails, zero to seven. So, I don't know if that makes sense. Moving on is operations and facilities, reduce cleaning, maintenance, grounds, and supplies, 75,000. Could I please have a, to get the conversation going, a motion and a second? Director Pearson, I'll second it. Comments, questions, deliberations, anything?
I'll just say one thing about this. I was looking in the same 201516 actual budget, you know, report in the 1617 revised budget and comparing to now, and just listing under custodians, it's a $398,000 increase, even though we don't have, you know, we have fewer buildings being occupied. And I know we have the PAC, so that's really expensive and big. We have the whole addition onto the high school, so that's really big, and we have Brookview. But I don't know, that just seemed like a really high increase in just a couple of years. So I'm wondering, again, as I did before, if there's something that we can do to maybe increase, is 75,000 enough? Could we change it to 100,000? And what would that look like?
Do you want to ask one on staff, and then I could go to Director Heffner?
So twofold. The increase in cost is obviously going to be the increase in contracts. That's a component of it. The other piece is, I would request that you look at the square footage to be cleaned, not the number of buildings to be cleaned, because there is a difference. One of the things, and we have added significant square footage to the high school and to Brookview, so that would be a consideration. One of the things that was talked about was we don't lease space anymore. We had had that. So there was transferring staff, and I can certainly go back and provide documents when the plan of, essentially, the 2015 vote took place and how that happened. So just so you recognize that there is a difference between the number of buildings and the square footage of which is required to be cleaned. Plus, we still, at least until probably late winter, we still, we're still required to somewhat maintain even the buildings that are closed. Once we, once one of them sells, then our costs go down. That said, back to, we can make whatever you deem necessary to reduce. We can work with that and reduce. Just recognize that, you know, the expectation as far as cleanliness and maintenance is, will be adjusted.
Well, I just wanted to also, thank you for that. I appreciate it. And I assume that those things were probably the case. You know, it seems like, it seems like a big increase, but I'm sure there are good reasons for that. But we are in a conversation about where we can cut, and this is clearly something that's not associated with students, right? So it seems like a good target.
As a representative of that group, I'd say they're very much a representative of students. They do, and they're a flagship for the people that walk in those buildings. I mean, I know what you're saying, Sarah.
We all are, right. We're all here. I do. And I'm, you know, we just have to make the cut somewhere. So that's why I'm raising the question. But the budget, in the revised budget, the custodian budget is two point, almost $2.5 million just for, just for the cuts. Just so that we know context, if we're asking them to cut $100,000 out of their budget, it's a pretty small chunk, a pretty small chunk compared to their total 200, $2.5 million budget.
So maybe this could be kind of along the lines of the 500,000 as we look for the future potential cuts.
I want to hear George's question.
Yep, I'm going to Director Heffner now. Thank you.
Well, my comment is more about the maintenance and the grounds, just those two pieces. And I've said this before, you've heard me say it. The school district, I think, does more here than in most communities. There is not a Stillwater Park and Rec Department the way there is in most communities.
That's true.
So when we pick up taking care of the JC fields or take care of the old athletic field, in other communities, city park and rec department would take care of that. When you go and look at maintenance for the areas that I wouldn't consider ours, a playground at X, or a baseball field or softball field at X, in many communities, that's picked up by the partnership with the city. We've got 18 cities that really rely on the district to get fields ready for them many times. So that would be one thing. Secondly, even though I guess I'm accused of being a member of a sports lobby many times, I would see, I would see the PAC Center as a community resource. And if it is, if we buy into, it's a community resource, and when you see the people who are up there walking, playing pickleball, traveling, tournaments being run all weekend, it seems to me that one of our responsibilities is if we believe that we should cut our maintenance and grounds, then I believe we should raise the fees for that. If we've put in turf fields and we're supposed to maintain minimally those turf fields, and we're cutting our budget to maintain them, well, then I think we should raise the facility, the people who are paying their facility fees for using those things. So I don't think it's just our operations and facilities. I think it's also when we increase our fees for facility rental, maybe they go from $40,000 to $70,000, we lower here, but then we raise someplace else. So I don't want us to just look at it as, what are, you know, is Lake Elmo or Stonebridge or Rutherford, are they going to be dirtier if we do this? But what about all those, you know, grounds areas that we take care of, because we're the school district, and well, that's our job, you know? Well, it's nice that it's our job, but...
Director Hockland?
Well, and I'm thinking about the SEC music conference that we had, you know, that was done on a day where we had the privilege of hosting different schools for all of our music departments, and presumably, you know, we had to have custodians on staff to help with the management. And so all of those things, that the extra space that the PAC has provided, and all those, you know, outside things. And Sarah, I just, I know you didn't mean it when you said that they don't affect students, but I just, personally, I just felt that comment was really classist. So I just, I want to make sure that we as a board don't communicate that we feel that anyone does not have a really direct impact on our student quality experience, so.
Director Patachek?
Question I have is this, and again, I don't know the answer to it, and that is, could some of this be offset by community ed? Because it seems to me they run many times a very healthy balance. And part of the increased cost in cleaning is because of outside usage. And so I like what George said, and I think it is addressed lower when we talk about requiring higher fees for usage, but at the same time, I'm saying, and again, I don't know how healthy the community ed budget is or isn't, but it would almost tackle like part of what Sarah said. Could we raise another 25,000 and pass that on without causing undue hardship to community education?
So we do take community ed, and I'll actually move away from the PAC even though, because there are components that we're already taking, but just for example, Adventure Club. There is a piece of Adventure Club that then ultimately covers custodian. Do I believe that there is an opportunity to look at that with a little finer or a sharper pencil? Absolutely. We can do, I mean, we can do something like that, again, if it's the board's direction that, you know, and it comes down to, you know, there's a lot of space. It is a, I think, one of you had mentioned before that, you know, Annette does a nice job with her program and her budget, and she absolutely does. She has the ability to impact fees. I mean, she has that opportunity where we don't necessarily. But that said, we could look at programming, whether it's the PAC, the auditorium, the, you know, Adventure Club and whatever, and look to how we allocate the funding and use of that, or, you know, that there, it's a little sharper pencil. We can certainly do that to get there. Again, I didn't want to say you can't...
Again, I didn't want to say you can, you can do whatever and we will make it work. Again, you just, I'm just trying to provide information so you can make the best informed decision that you need.
I appreciate that.
And I'm concerned the balance, in that, hey, can they absorb some of that? But at the same time, I don't want to cause undue hardship to community education.
Just quick, who made the motion for this? Don't we remember who did that? Barb, do you have?
Did I? Shelley, you have? Thank you. No, it's been so long.
Director Stiblun?
I would, at this time, I appreciated this conversation. I think it's a really interesting one. I would like to make an amendment to the motion. I would like to amend it to, to reduce, reduce the expenses for cleaning, maintenance, grounds and supplies to, by, by one hundred thousand. It's listed as seventy-five, I would like to change that to one hundred thousand.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, so, okay, I, so we, we do need to vote on the amendment. I need to just ask about this. Can you, can you weigh in on the additional twenty-five thousand where, where the seventy-five thousand recommendation came in? And if I'm going to support this, I just need to feel good about it, that the twenty-five isn't going to be a significant, won't have some form of significant impact.
Absolutely. So when looking at this number and trying to come up with this number, we've looked at different areas and, and, you know, whether it's, it's popular or not. I mean, there's things we can do and we've, and we've been working to become more efficient, like just with purchasing of cleaning supplies. And some, some buildings you actually see a little bit of squirrel behavior in that they're saving for a rainy day. And then other, you know, so you, you can look at how we purchase and is, is it maybe a centralized purchasing system that then gets distributed to the buildings? There's things like that that we might have opportunity to do. When looking at, like, let's say the grounds, there is an expectation, or at least it's been a practice, that maybe at a school building, a PTA goes, wow, we, we want a beautiful garden. And that beautiful garden puts in, and, and people, at that time, let's say it's an elementary school, are really diligent, because that's their project. The problem is those kids age out and they take their parents with them. And then there's not as much ownership to the project, of which then lends itself to the district having to maintain various gardens and landscaping. And honestly, we would look to, to, you know, say either this is a PTA responsibility or it becomes grass. Because we can get some efficiencies as far as the, it, again, it's altering expectation of what we're looking to do. If you say an additional twenty-five thousand dollars, and I've heard at this board level, then Annette and I will have a conversation about what the different programs support, or what we've asked them to support in the past, and what we say, you know, this really is the true cost. Kind of to Georgia's point of facility rental, there's what the district has picked up and then there's the true cost. And so we would have, so if you said it was a hundred, do I believe we could do that with the understanding that I'm going to be looking to community ed? Yes, I think we can do that.
Okay, thank you very much. Director Pearson?
Thank you for that. It's, I think, why I would support an increase is because I think there's some room for reaching out. And maybe we need to get to the point where we reach out to our cities and just see how we could partner with them. And I know that's just kind of shifting money from one group of taxpayers to another, but there is that. So it sounds like there's some wiggle room there and maybe some opportunity for partnership.
All right, anyone else? Okay, so I'm going to just make sure everyone understands this motion and a second. Operations and facilities, reduce cleaning, maintenance, grounds and supplies by one hundred thousand. All those in favor of that motion, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries four to three. All right. Activities, athletics, increase high school athletic and activity participation fees to cover additional costs of programming, sixty-five thousand dollars. Just to get the conversation going, can I please have a motion and a second?
I'll move.
Director Pearson?
I'll second.
Second by Director Stiblun. Comments, questions, motions? Ready to go, we got the motion already, so. Sorry, Director Patachik?
I, I think for the record, we, we say this all the time when we talk about participation fees. But we do know that for those who can't afford it, there are available avenues, so that kids are not kept from participating if they're less well off.
Okay, Director Lockman?
And I think another part of that is, there still may be barriers around transportation. It's also a very complex process to apply, to try to, you know, receive those scholarships. There's also stigma around it. So I think that there's also other barriers that even if the scholarships are there, it's not necessarily going to allow those students to participate.
Okay, Director Stiblun? We're ready to roll?
I agree.
Okay.
I don't need to say anything more.
Okay, so again, this is a motion for the, in the affirmative, to increase the high school athletic and activity participation fees to cover additional costs of programming to a tune of sixty-five thousand. All those in favor of that motion, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, Director Pearson? Those opposed, raise your hand, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right, so motion fails one to six.
I want to just say thank you to Ricky Michael for putting all that work into his plan and coming here and giving his presentation.
Yeah, absolutely.
It was a lot of work and he did a great job.
Yeah.
Good use of time.
I couldn't, I can't thank him enough. I agree, we really appreciate that. District-wide user of Fee Pay picks up fees for use of credit card, fifty-two thousand dollars. Can I have a motion and a second?
I'll move.
Director Lockman, a second? Second by Director Hovland. Comments, questions? Director Pearson?
I have a question, and I apologize, I didn't think to ask it before. But if somebody's paying for school lunch for the whole year, any idea how much that is and the impact? I think that's where the percentage bothers me the most, is where people are buying their food. And how much of an increase is that?
And is it by transaction? Like if you paid for the whole year, would you just pay the one transaction?
If, no matter what, it's going to be the same as the percentage.
Well, that said, food service is food service. So if you chose to say it's everything but food service and that is supported by a different fund, you have that option to do that. Because this is, you know, you have, you have a couple of funds involved here. You have the general fund, you have the food service fund, and you have a community ed fund.
It's like thirteen dollars for the whole year, so.
What was the number?
It's like thirteen dollars for the whole year, which isn't.
If you had to.
What's thirteen dollars? For the fee.
Would they write a check? And they could, yeah.
You know, that, and herein lies the interesting conversation that was had when Fee Pay began, is that there is, it actually serves the district to have an electronic payment, in part. Quite honestly, it prevents fraud. It doesn't allow, and I'm, and it's probably not food service, but your random programming, where people are writing checks, sometimes they sit in desk drawers. And they're not cashed in a timely manner. They're not, there's, there's, whether it be cash or check, we've encouraged to move away from that for a variety of reasons. Can they? They can. Do we accept checks? Yes, we do. Our encouragement is for electronic, just because it eliminates a lot of the unsavory components of having cash or checks in your buildings.
You're going to be asking the same questions.
So to that point, because we got an email the other day from somebody saying, then I'll just write more checks. Is, I mean, is this going to become more of a headache than we want it to be?
Well, it's, again, does it, does it, does it reduce what we were trying, what we were trying to encourage? Like I say, and, and when I say encourage, it truly is on the, and I'm not talking the fiscal responsibility as far as how we spend our dollars. It's the fiscal responsibility and far, as far as making sure we're doing it the right way. We're not exposing ourselves to any of the, of the things that seem to happen in the outside world. So the less cash we have, or checks, it's just better for everybody. That said, back to your weighing, what is, it's not, you know, it, whether it impacts, what, what is the impact? Are you willing to take more of a chance? Well, and you're going to have building-level secretaries probably counting cash or checks now as opposed to not. But it's, you know, make your decision based on the knowledge you have. You will spend probably more staff time counting checks. You expose yourself to a slightly greater risk, like I say, of, of just even, not necess, fraud possibly, but even just honestly, things being forgotten. They get put away. Checks get put away and all of a sudden at the end of the year, when everybody's cleaning up, you have a batch of checks that are eight months old. That happens. The question is, is the dollar amount worth that piece to you? But you will spend, there will be more staff time. And again, you can, you can pick and choose. You can say areas that, yep, we're not going to do this for food service, or we're not going to do, you know, whatever you want that to look like.
So how does that impact the fifty-two K?
The fifty-two K is what's happening in the general fund.
So if we, if we, just one sec, if we take out the food service?
That's fun too. So that, if you said, you know what, we're, that the district will continue to pick up the cost of running Fee Pay for food service deposits? And I want to say you were provided a sheet saying, you know.
Right, I'm sorry.
The different dollar amounts. You can, it does, it's not, I mean, it's easiest to be an all or nothing, but it doesn't have to be an all or nothing. You can say, you know what, we fully want people and encourage people to continue to use the credit card and food service, and we're not going to make them support that cost.
Director Patachik?
Question I have, I got this same thing, I think our board members got this one, and apparently she has three children in the district. And she estimated, I think the cost is a hundred dollars a year. Is that an exaggeration, approximation?
Well, so she had said a dollar amount of twenty-five hundred, which would be seventy-five.
Yeah, it's, it's. I want to say the greatest percentage, and again, it's in, it's in the material that I provide. But let's say you're running three or four percent of whatever she's paying, that's what it would be.
So she's, right, it could be a hundred dollars.
Okay. There's, because we do this in participation in athletic activities, is there any way you can build in a, a family rate differently than if I have one kid, two kids, and then maybe more? Without getting too complicated, you know? Because I mean, it can.
It all comes down to tracking.
Oh, you bet, you bet.
When you say a, a family rate, Mike, are you talking about, so I?
I'm just talking.
Let's say I have two or three that play fall sports and then I have.
No, no, no. And, and I'm not looking for the, I'm, basically, I'm, I look at more limited, the food.
Yes.
The kids eating. Is there anything you can build in there as a fear you can't distinguish?
Well, you can build, yeah, you can, I mean, if you say, we're going to charge, you know, three dollars for a meal, and we're going to assume that they're, that you're using your credit card to do that, we're going to upcharge you another buck. I mean, we could pick a dollar amount, and then the remainder is what the district absorbs. We certainly can do that.
And I'm thinking of it particularly when it comes to large families, because in that case, there's, there may be a real hardship.
I would say it would, it would be significantly harder with, yep, I understand, it might be harder to, I don't know how to differentiate necessarily who's using it. It would be easier just to say, no one is going to pay more than a dollar per whatever, you know what I mean? Like, we build that into a price. It's fifty cents more, or it's whatever, and then we just know that the remainder of those fees will be absorbed by the fund in which it comes from. We can do that. I don't, I think it's going to be very, very challenging to say you have a fam, oh, oh, you know, the, the Patachiks are a family of seven, and so their amount is. I'm trying to go big kids here, a lot of kids. You know, so therefore their fee, they're, we're going to add twenty-five cents on to their, you know, meal account. But the Keesters have one, and so they're going to, that's, that would be, that, it would be, and you would spend far more in staff time than even debating this budget item, to be honest with you.
I mean, truly, I'm sorry.
Remember to go to Director.
I was going to say, it's seven cents a meal or something like that. So it's, I mean, it feels like a lot, but I, at the end of the day, it's pennies.
Director Hepner?
Can I pay with a check or cash and not pay any user fees?
Yes.
So do we anticipate that many people, I don't know what many means, many people will go to checks because they have to pay this extra? It seems to me that's what we're waiting.
It does, and you're, and you're, you're saying what is, what is an individual family's level of measure of convenience?
Because they pay it for, they go to a Twins baseball game, you know, they, and they don't buy the tickets right there. If they get them in advance, they go to a place somewhere, they pay a convenience, and they get it from a Ticketmaster or something. I mean, it's kind of the way using a credit card has become.
Director Pearson, I'm going to put you on the spot. Does that come to approximately a dollar forty a month for, per child for meals, based on what you're?
Around that.
Approximately?
So, maybe a little, maybe a dollar fifty or.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's, it's hard, because, so I have four kids, and so I, we pay a small fortune to, for activities and food and all of that. And will it make an impact? Yes. Which, it's hard to measure how much of an impact. I probably won't write out checks, because it's easier to go online, and, and I think most would be in that boat. I think they'll have the option to use checks if they want to. I don't know how you sign up for sports and can pay with check, because it makes you.
It's fee, it's all run through Fee Pay.
Right. So, that's a question, but.
Director Stiblun?
Yeah, I just had a thought. I, I, I kind of hear from everyone that there's a lot of concern about doing this, but then, you know, we're just kind of weighing this back and forth. And I'm wondering, you know, the total amount we'd be saving if we did this, if we voted in, in the affirmative, was fifty-two thousand dollars. In the whole scheme of things, you know, I guess that helps, but it's not, it's not enormous. I wonder if we could consider keeping this one sort of on our radar? Like, can we have a list of things that we would consider at, at, you know, the next, say, phase of these budget conversations? And say, at least for now, let's hold it. And, and, but just know that it could still happen. I mean, what would be the latest time that we would have to make that change? If we were going to, if we were going to change that, you know, for next year?
To me, it comes down to just pure notification of families. That's the amount of time you need.
So technically, even June could be, or May, or, I mean, we, we don't want to wait that.
Well, yes, you could make that decision at any time, I will say, because of when we do the preliminary budget, it might not even be reflected in there. But back to, if you make a decision at a later time, I would just ask that we have enough notification to provide to families of the change.
Yep, absolutely.
So let's kind of say, it could be made, like, say, maybe March or something like that. If we had it, if, if we really wanted to implement this at a later date, we could. So, I guess that's just my thinking about this. I actually feel the same way about the one below this two, well, the, the next two, but that's just my thoughts.
All right, why don't we?
Can I ask what the benefit of that would be? Of holding off? I mean, if we believe this is something that should be done, whether you, you say it should be done in December, or it should be done in March, you believe it should be done, or you don't believe it should be done. What, what is the benefit of holding off?
I guess I'm thinking if we vote today and it fails, I would like to have it as a consideration for future decisions. I don't want to say, if it fails today, I don't know how it's going to go today, but if it fails today, I personally would like to have it still on our radar as something that we could come back to. So that's the only thing I'm thinking.
It would.
Yeah, go ahead.
It would seem to me that anything that failed today could be revisited. Now, not proposing we do that, because we're, we don't want to flip-flop and keep doing that. But at this point, if it fails today, it fails today. If a new board comes in and says, hey, let's re, look at that, they could cancel it.
One more question on this? Apology that I'm asking, and I'm sure you've already answered. If we take the food off of this amount, what is the, is there a figure?
This is the general fund amount.
So this is just the general, so there, I thought you were saying we can move this, not consider the lunches in this, or something?
That's exactly what I'm saying. I'm saying it wouldn't impact this dollar amount, because the food service has their own.
So wait, so you, do we not have food service on this list yet? I mean, or the original list?
No, because food service is fun too.
It's a separate fund, we're not talking about that.
Correct.
We're not talking to say.
Well, I mean, what I, what I would do is, let's go this way. The dollar amount is the gen, is representative of the, of the general fund. If you said we're doing Fee Pay unless you made, then I would assume, I would assume it's across the board. It's for community ed programming, it's for food service programming, it's for general fund programming. fund programming. If you said, we only want to apply it to the general fund and community ed, but leave food service harmless, it's the setup of what we do. This dollar amount is reflective of the general fund.
So what kinds of activities does that mean?
Athletics. I'm trying to think of the.
Music trips, I know.
Anything fee pay that is that operation. Again, if you said, you know what, we're not interested in changing procedurally how we do this, and how the dollars get, you know, whether the district is paying or not, that's fund two. So you can do that.
Okay, so this $52,000 would impact people who are purchasing athletic activities, trips?
Yearbook.
Uh, your purchase yearbook.
Anything, anything on the program.
It would not cover anything related, it would not change anything relating to food purchases for school lunch, is that right?
But isn't that part of what we're voting? I mean, part of what we're voting is that.
This $52,000 does not include that.
That we're voting to user, user fee pay picks up fees across the board, so.
But this dollar amount is only general fund.
So if you wanted to leave out food service, you just have to note that, so that we know not to include that area.
But, but I.
Wait, wait, I just would like, I want Sarah to feel like she's understanding, so can, before we go to you, Mike, go, Sarah, do you want to try to get clarification?
So even though it's not in that line, it's still, like, we're voting, user fee pay picks up fees for use of credit card across the board. The part that impacts the general fund is 52,000. We could say we don't want it to include lunches.
And, and so this, we're, so by voting on this, we're saying we're going to increase those costs to community ed as well?
Yes.
And to food?
Yes, now, again.
But the $52,000 is only the portion?
With the general fund.
Yes. The, the description of reduction is the procedure. So you're saying procedurally across the board, we're going to do this. You can adjust the, for this one, not, obviously not for the other ones, but for this one, you could adjust the procedure and say, we only want it to impact the general fund and community ed fund, but leave the food service fund alone. The estimated savings merely is the general fund.
Okay. So, but what is the impact on the budget then, for those two other budgets? You know?
I haven't calced what, what is in their budget, because we haven't been looking for reductions in their budgets.
There would be an increase, I think your point, Sarah, is that it's not savings for us, because those are different funds, right? You have community ed and food service are different. So if we raise it across the board, they're going to be, you know, it's going to add to their overall savings.
Director Patachuk?
Well, I think you made an excellent point. I mean, when you think about it, how much it's in our interest for people to use credit cards. I mean, wow, all kinds of activities, et cetera. If you get it funded or funneled into credit cards, boy, does that simplify for a lot of people. And, and you got to realize, in our district, this is a tremendous number of transactions are taking place, so, boy, there's a benefit of this, so.
Any other comments, questions? All right, I think we're going to take this to a vote. All those in favor of the district-wide user of fee pay picks up fees for use of credit card to the tune of $52,000, raise your hand, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Two opposed, motion carries five to two. Operations and facilities, increase fees for facility rental, $40,000, can I have a motion in a second?
I'll move.
I'll second that. Comments, questions, deliberations? If nothing, let's, let's take this to a vote. All those in favor of operations and facilities to increase fees for facility rental to the tune of $40,000, raise your hand, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Memberships, contracts, restructure assessment configurations, charge service fee for advanced placement AP tests, $35,000, can I have a motion in a second?
I'll move.
And second?
I'll second.
By Director Pearson. Comments, questions, anything? Director Pearson?
Dr. McDowell, can you go over this a little bit more in detail again? What this, I know that ACT Aspire, but just if you can lay it out for us.
Yep, so essentially, the way that we structured this one, just because in the midst of trying to figure this out, we tried to go through and see where are areas that we could reduce the amount of tests we're giving, but still stay with, with the assessments that we need to do. And so, this is, the one area, again, is that edge annuity. We would shift from edge annuity, most likely to apex. And we're able to do that in doing some checking with some other districts, we can probably save about half of what we're doing now, so it'd be a good efficiency there. The other thing is, we would reduce our ACT Aspire testing. Right now, we go all the way up through 10th grade, and we would back that down. And then, the other thing that we.
Back down, can you just clarify, maybe it would just be one year of that?
Right now, six through 10.
Right now, six through 10, and what we would do is, let me remember on this one, we'd go two grade levels rather than four grade levels on that one, and then, we would reduce our FAST assessment in the opposite direction, keep it at the elementary, and reduce the amount of assessments we're giving at the middle school level. So, all in all, that's how we get to that number of 35, is trying to reduce that. The AP assessment, in checking the details on that, since we last spoke, we are already at our max cap. So I can't, we already, we already assessed that, but AP won't allow us to, to charge anymore for that, so.
So that was my only concern in that, so thank you for clarifying that.
And then also, is this separate from the ACT question, or?
Correct. If you remember, last time.
We took the ACT thing off.
Yeah, we took the ACT off, which is where we dropped from 75 to 35.
Okay, that's right, thank you.
So if you were, sorry.
Yep, no problem.
So if you were going to figure out the charge service fee for advanced placement test, how much does a kid pay for the service fee?
Approximately. The, I want to say there is a service fee of up to $9 per test that can be assessed. And we're at that maximum, but I would say this, the unique thing we have here, that we've shared with our, in our results policy, is we give about 1,600 tests, and where, where that $9 goes to is paying for all the proctors we need, because we need an absolute incredible amount of proctors to be here for multiple days. So, that's how we ended up already at the cap, is just to try and pay for the proctors.
Or quick related, is there a safety net here as well?
I.
For kids?
Yes.
Oh, for kids that can't afford it? Yeah, yeah.
And when we say kids that can't afford, do we mean kids that qualify for free to do some lunch?
That is done through the assessment service itself.
Okay.
As they register, if I understand it correctly, because they don't register, for, for AP testing, there's a registration service that registers the kids. We don't register them here. And so that process is done through that grouping.
And then is there a bubble, like, for the next group of kids that?
I don't know the answer to that.
It may be a financial hardship, but don't qualify. Would Angel Fund or Youth Advantage, you know, either of those?
You probably could. We could probably, I don't know why that wouldn't work that way.
Because I know there's a bubble of kids that don't qualify, but it still is a hardship.
And as we move forward, I mean, that's a question that hasn't been asked before, so I mean, that's something we could ask, we could ask Patty. She would know if there's kids, families that have requested that, because we would just send them in that direction.
Sure, okay, thank you. Director Hapner?
Did I hear you say that it's a $40,000 item to not charge for ACT, that we pay $40,000?
That's correct. It's $61.50 a test.
Okay, I would like to make an amendment to this, to add ACT back in. One, to make a comment about it, and two, because I really think we should.
All right, can I have a second to that?
I'll second.
Okay.
Here's my comment about it. Kids are, we're paying for a college entrance test for a student who's going to pay, if he goes to a cheap four-year program, $40,000? And so, if, it seems to me that we're, we're paying so that that student can take a test that's necessary for him to go to his choice of college. In some cases, they're going to pay over $100,000 for the college, and yet, we're picking up the ACT cost. I, I still would like somebody to explain to me why it's harmful for us to not pay, harmful for them, if they have to pay for that ACT entrance test. It, it seems to me that should be part of the whole, they're, they're going to college, and so they pay for the test that may or may not impact their college entrance.
Well, part of the reason we're in this, I would say, the mindset of this, is, if you remember, when the legislature first passed that you're going to offer this, they paid for that first year.
Right.
And so, there was no need to have this conversation. Well, now you're in the conundrum that we offered it, and someone else paid for it, and since then, we've had to pick up the bill. So now, that's, that's kind of why we're in this conversation.
We've had to, or we chose to?
We've chosen to.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Director Patachuk, and then?
Yeah, good question, and I think you've answered it. Other than how George has defined it, using it for entrance, to get into college, whatever, does the district use those results?
Not to my knowledge, the ACT results.
Yes, they do.
For what we're, for what we're doing, for programming on our side, unless I'm the speaking, Angel.
We look at it for school goals, for the high school level, but there are other measures we could look at.
Can I just speak to that a little bit? Because I've been to a couple of meetings, or a lot of people out there in the state of Minnesota, wanting to have talked about using the ACT instead of MCAs, to, you know, the total scores and breakdowns, as, as an assessment like that, because it would benefit the student and the school?
And I'm not arguing that. I'm just answering the question that Mike asked, which was, are we currently using that?
Yes, I understand that.
Quite honestly, if you're doing that, then I think it takes away from that argument.
Director Lockman, I skipped at the beginning, so I'm going to you, and then we'll go to Director Pearson.
Thank you. Oh, thank you. Well, I was just going to respond to George. I think that there are a lot of students who are able to hire ACT coaches, or college prep coaches. A lot of students who obviously cannot, and I think that to have the ACT provided once, for them to, anyway, it is literally a freebie, but have them be able to, to use that, to see if, you know, they, they have to take it again, and that would be on their own dime. But I think it would, I think it would have a really huge impact on the students that aren't able to hire private tutors, and not have any kind of, kind of prep work themselves.
I, yeah, I totally agree with that. I have a couple of things to say, but I'm going to go to Director Pearson.
Yeah, I agree with that as well. And when we're looking at the list, and we're unwilling to increase the athletic fees, but then want to charge, it just feels like it's not the right message that we want to send.
And I, I'd just like to quickly speak to culture in general. You know, the, the fee pay was, that's one I did not want to vote on. So, that was difficult for me personally, and, and this one is even more difficult, and I won't support it, because I, we are in a culture right now where our kids are taking multiple ACT tests, not because they can, because they, in many, in many ways, have to. And the, the way the system is with these universities right now, and got to get that high ACT score, and the haves that can afford the, the tutors, and spend thousands of dollars to get those great grades, more power to them, but this is one that I feel strongly about. I absolutely will not support this cut, so.
Director Patachuk?
The question I have on this is, I'm not sure where the amendment to add ACT was, and where this.
And that's, he made an amendment to add the ACT onto the AP tests, and we do have to vote on, on his amendment, because it was seconded, yeah. So, all right, do you want to go all the vote on that?
Just another comp, I don't, I totally agree that many of our kids take ACT prep classes, I think community ed even offers ACT prep classes. I don't see what that has to do, and I guess I just need a little transition in there. I don't see what that has to do with us not picking up the cost for the ACT score, taking the test. Some kids have the means to take all the prep classes. I mean, ideally, we would offer an ACT prep class free to anybody that wanted to wander into the room, but we don't do that. Community ed doesn't do that, perhaps they should. But how does the fact that some kids take ACT prep, how does that speak to the issue of, why does anybody pick up, why do we pick up the cost of ACT testing? Because some kids can take a class to get ready for it, then therefore, we should pay for the ACT test for everybody, even though some kids have paid 250 bucks or more for a prep class?
I, I mean, I think.
I just need the transition.
I, I think, I appreciate it, and I think there are, you know, a lot of opinions on the strong ones, and they all have validity, but I'm going to go to Sarah, and then we should probably take a vote on the amendment.
Yeah, I think, I, I hear your question, and I appreciate that. I, and I do, you've given me something to think about. I agree, to some extent, I agree with what you're saying. I also think it's an equity issue, and I think the reason why the state paid for every child to take the ACT is, I think it was being explored as something that we could use at the state level, at the school level, as an assessment to see how we're doing. I mean, I don't know what the reason was, but they were obviously looking at it as something that we want all of our students to do. If we're going to require all of our students to take a test, we should be paying for that test, we shouldn't ask them to pay for it. If it's a, an elective test that a family chooses to have their children take, then I'm, like, the APs, you know, they pay for the AP test. If, if it's an elective test, then I say, okay, fine, then you can pay for it if it's an elective, but if it's something we're going to require kids to do, then I think we should.
I would agree with that, but right now, we don't.
And right now, most of our kids are taking it. It is kind of, like, expected to take it. We want all of our kids to take it. Is that, would you agree? Is that true?
Well, I think you're, want, you can't have all of that in the same sentence.
I am confused myself.
So, so here's what it is. We're required to offer it. We don't require kids to take it. So from a technical standpoint, we don't require it, we're required to offer it, we do offer it, we currently pay for it.
And the question I was going to ask earlier is, what percent of kids, I mean, are most kids taking it? I mean, what, by far and away, are most kids taking us up on that offer, being that it's free? Do you guys know?
I think that the majority of your students do take that ACT. I don't have their numbers in front of me.
All right, we're almost ready for the vote here. Director Patachuk?
A question I would, to relieve some anxiety that I sense with people. There's a lot of research skepticism on prepping or having special classes where it really makes a difference on the results. So, don't feel compelled, my perception, that, gee, I got to go out there and hire an expensive tutor, and that's going to raise my scores significantly, because I'm saying, boy, there's very little research that that does.
And that, that's very, of course, that's very true. It sounds like a job for the legislative group in 2019, to go back to our legislators.
Oh, we got a long list.
Yeah, yeah, we do. All right, I think we're, it's time, so now we are going to vote on the amendment to add the ACT to the dollar amount. All those in favor, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, the amendment fails one to six. Now you go back, sorry.
No, no. You're good.
Now, all right, now let's go back to the memberships and contracts. Restructure assessment configurations, charge service fee for advanced placement.
That part is up.
AP tests, $35,000. We can vote on that.
We did, but it's, that has been removed.
So it's just restructure assessment?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right.
We can't charge it anymore than we're charged.
Yep, pardon me. Yep, thank you. Pardon me. Thank you for that comment. All right, all those in favor, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Supply and materials, reduce building supply budgets, $24,000. Can I please have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
In a second by Director Potatik. Comments, questions, thoughts? Punifications? Let us throw a different one in there.
Can we just get a refresher on, like, what is this exactly?
I believe what was chosen at the last time was that building, buildings get a building supply budget based on the number of students that they have each year. This is essentially saying you would reduce that allocation by 2%.
Okay. And they could spend it on anything they want to spend it on?
Whatever.
Pretty much?
It is their choice.
You know, you've got a broken chair, they can buy a broken chair.
Yeah. I would have said, they typically use capital, but you just froze that on them, so yes, that's true.
I don't know, what do they spend it on? I mean, do they need this money?
They could need art supplies, they could need, I mean, you name it.
Yes, they.
They want to buy balloons for some special event or something.
No balloons.
No balloons. It's supplies. It literally is, it's.
Instructional supply budget is what it is. So, anything related to a teacher that needs.
Yeah.
We can't have balloons, really?
Actually, they. Well, you're, I'm sorry, what's the total, do you know what the total supply budget is?
Well, if you figure a percent is $12,000, that's, I mean, if this is 2%, you must be $240,000.
Okay. So, they would still have some money to work with for these things? This is just reducing that amount?
Yes.
Okay.
It has, in the last few years, it was frozen for a while, and in the last few years, we've, that allocation has bumped up 2%. And I would say the last four years, maybe even five, and this would just be saying, no, we're going to take 2% back.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, so those in favor of reducing building supply budgets, $24,000, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, that concludes the.
Yeah.
I have a motion.
Question?
About the budget. Can we do any additions?
Total is 1178.
1076.
All right, Director Stivlin?
I think early on, we talked about possibly adding other things in that aren't on this list, that we could consider at this time. I don't know that we could vote on this today, but I would like to make a proposal that we explore. I would, I guess I can just go ahead and make a motion. Or can I?
You can make, yeah. You can make a motion.
I would like, I would like to make a motion that we direct administration to consider the impact of reducing all of the instructional coaches for next year.
So, just to clarify, you are making a motion to have the administration come back to the board table to give us the impact of reducing 100% of the instructional coaches? Is that accurate? Do I have that right?
So, a couple of things, well.
Maybe you want to do the motion first.
I'd like to make a motion that we consider cutting all instructional coaches for next year. And the reason why I bring it up now is because I know that is a staffing issue, and that's the reason why we're having this meeting now, is if it does impact staffing, we need to, that's one that we do need territory on.
So then, can I just clarify, maybe just for terminology of what you're going to make the motion on? The general budget only controls three of the instructional coaches. The administration doesn't control the instructional coaches for those coming out of Q Comp. That's a Q Comp piece?
But we.
So, I'm just saying, the only budgetary control you have over are the three out of the general fund.
Okay. I would like to propose that we cut all of them, because I don't think it makes sense. I mean, at least, that's just what I would like to propose.
Three of them, then?
And then figure out what that looks like. Just figure out what that impact is.
Right, and I, well, I guess maybe.
Because I know there's going to be procedures and process and people involved and all of that, to see if that can be made.
I'll try to explain it differently. As a board, you can't just cut the ones coming out of Q Comp, because you're in an agreement with the Q Comp as part of the plan to the state.
So, as the board, I would like to ask them to consider that, and then come back to us with a, I would like to initiate that conversation with them, with the Q Comp board.
Okay.
And then they can decide what they want to do, or if they want to come back to us and say, here's why this won't work, or whatever, but I would like to initiate that conversation now.
So then, I would say.
Knowing it's not fully in our control.
So then, I would say, maybe to help with the motion, then, of how to express it, would be, you want to make a motion to eliminate instructional coaching.
Yes.
From the district side. That's part one. Part two is, you want to enter, you want to re-enter into negotiation with the teachers' union to eliminate instructional coaching from Q Comp.
Okay.
Those would be the two things, because they're two different things.
That would have to be two separate.
There's two separate items. Ultimately getting you to what I heard you say, but they're two separate things.
However, whatever it would look like, yes. Would like to initiate that conversation.
There's got to be a third point about achievement integration, doesn't there?
Yeah, and then probably, you probably want to, you may want to do something with the achievement integration one, because one's paid out of that. So I guess, I guess what I'm hearing is, as you're making a motion that the board accept, you want to eliminate the totality of instructional coaching programming from District 834.
For next year.
Okay. Why don't we have a second, and then, and then it sounds like this is going to need some conversation? So, can, would you like to second that motion? And then we can go to discussion?
With one qualification.
Okay.
I think at this stage, and I think, I sense you might be in favor of, is investigate. In other words, bring forward.
I think we start with what her motion was, and then see where it goes.
Okay, there's a second now, conversation, questions, discussion. Director Olakman?
I cannot think of a more backwards impact to student achievement and our systems. It's obviously going to be up to the new board, but I want to go on the record right now, saying, I think this is a catastrophic mistake. There is no district worth its salt in the metro area that does not have instructional coaches, because of what the research says. I really feel for our students if that's what happens. I just, I'm, it's devastating.
I'm going to go with Dr. Hefner, and then you.
I'm not going to repeat all the evidence I said at the last meeting, but the bottom line is, the evidence seems to indicate more than class size, more than standardized testing, having coaching impacts student achievement.
Director Stivlin?
I can just say simply, I believe our teachers can teach. And I know that this program is incredibly helpful, and I'm not discounting that. I know we have some phenomenal people as instructional coaches. We have to find $2.5 million of savings in our budget. And this is a very expensive program. And as I said earlier, I believe in our teachers, and I think they can do a very good job, and, and they will support each other without the formal, formal organization of the instructional coaches.
Anyone? Director Olakman?
I just need to respond to that. So, I don't think any of us saying we don't believe in our teachers, but to presume that our teachers, the overwhelming majority who teach in isolation, who don't have enough time as it is to grade papers, meet with parents, go to IEP meetings, do their PLCs, that they are going to have time to replicate, or even come close to replicating, the value that an instructional coach can provide, and why we would deny our teachers that kind of opportunity to grow professionally in the, in the, in the teaching art, I think is why we see people not going into education anymore. And we are having a dire shortage on our hands in the state of Minnesota. So, we don't have mentors, we don't have instructional coaches, we don't, we get rid of all these. Where do the teachers go for support? And then what about the teachers that, you know what, should be coached out of education? We hear all the time about, in, you know, some, and even good teachers will say this, they don't want the teachers that aren't there for the right reasons doing the right work. Who then helps them either grow and develop as they should? But to put that all on the teacher with no extra support, I just, again, I, it's kind of like, again, asking your doctors to do surgery with no nurses. I just.
Director Stivlin?
Okay, I really don't think the instructional coaches are like nurses to doctors. I really feel they're, I mean, we have like about one in every building. They're stretched very thin, they're there to help. I think you gave a list, a good list, of all of the other ways that we support our teachers. They are not isolated if they're meeting for PLC meetings, and if they, if they have team meetings with their, with their groups in the, in the buildings. To me, having a meeting with an instructional coach is just one more thing you have to take care of. It's more paperwork, it's more system think. And I believe that the core of all education is the relationship between the teachers and the students. And the more we put on our teachers' plates, the more they have to think about and stress about, and things that take their time, the less they can focus on what they're doing actually in the classroom. And I just believe in that very, 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 to my, the core of my being, that it's about the relationship between the teacher and the student. And all of the rest of this is nice to have, but we can't lose sight of the fact that that's where all the teaching really happens, is in that relationship. And I don't, I believe that instructional coaches are valuable. I believe they do add skills to teachers when they need it, and I think they're incredible relationships. But they're extremely, this program is very, very expensive. It really is very expensive. And we're trying to keep these cuts, you know, as far away from the actual classroom where teachers are teaching with students as we possibly can. That's just how I feel about it.
I'm going to go to Director Potatik, and then back to Director.
A couple of things quickly, as I can. First of all, I have heard from others that our teachers are among the best paid in the state of Minnesota, and I believe that. Now, I don't think we should be ashamed of that. I think they're very, very well qualified, they're experienced, they have higher degrees, which is, in a way, this is all justification why we don't need coaches, because we have a well-seasoned staff. That's why we pay them well, is because of that. So I'm saying, and I don't say that with a complete entirety, because I'm saying there are exceptions. What I had asked for, didn't get it, and I understand that, was investigate, because I want to hear more. As far as I know, we've been doing this program for four years. And somewhere along the line, that should show up in our results.
All right, I think Director Stivlin was starting with this, and doesn't preclude anyone from me for the secondary motion on it, so anything else to say about this? All right, all those in favor of Director Stivlin's motion, do I have to repeat it, or are we?
Yeah, that would be good news.
So, your motion was to, well, all right, completely, completely remove the instructional coach program with the, considering the three, the three that we paid out of our budget, as well as the Q Comp portion of the instructional coach program, which is a secondary, a second budget area that we would then have to take to a different level, basically. We have to take that to the state level, or how, I'm sorry.
We would read.
Okay, got it? Are we?
And the one from achievement integration.
Did you add that, or is?
Yeah, I'm saying all, I'm saying all, because I think those budgets could be.
Eliminating instructional coaching.
Eliminate the instructional coaching, including the integration.
It would be $124,000 from achievement and integration that would need to be used elsewhere. And the Q Comp is currently covering the cost of four instructional coaches, that's $450,000. Those funds would have to be, they would have to find a different determination. I don't know what that looks like. And then what we cover is three coaches.
Correct.
What we actually have control over is $348,000, that's three instructional coaches.
Okay.
So it's a total of eight coaches that I'm recommending that we consider.
We completely basically eliminate the program? Do you have anything else, or?
Well, I was just going to say, this is the exact reason why I was so adamant in that meeting. I didn't want to be short-sighted that we were spending money that we didn't have, only to be at this table to completely start to decimate and tear down systems that were just getting some momentum. And so, I just, I want to be on the record again, saying.
All right, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion fails three to four. Four. All right, any, any other motions? Any other? Director Olakman?
So, I'd like to make a motion that the board cut $10,000 from the budget. I know Director Pearson said that was a third of the budget, but as I look at the totality of the board budget, I'm seeing it's much greater than that.
So where are you looking in the budget? Where's the line item? So where is that in the budget?
That is, surely it'd be broken up into different components, because it depends, does it fall under salary enough, does it share the 100, and then consultant would be the three, so it's going to be mixed in there.
So there's everything from, you know, our own travel expenses, to conferences, to food, of course, our salary. You could make other adjustments and not do anything to your salaries if that's what the board said, or you could say, hey, we're asking everyone else to take a 10%. Again, I recognize where I sit, that doesn't affect me, and I sit in that privilege. I personally, I'm not speaking for anyone else, if the board did decide to do anything to their salary, I would retroactively pay mine, so that I could take that, some, assuage some of that as well. So, to me, there's, there's plenty that we could look at. Again, food, travel, travel was $1,000, there's $1,000 right there, some other things, so I'd like to make a motion that the board looks at cutting $10,000 from their own budget.
Is there a second? I'll second. Comments, questions?
I just have a question. If you take all those different numbers that you alluded to, the 305, 3, and whatever, what's the total, I mean, what does $10,000 amount to in terms of a percentage? Because we've talked on some of these others, we're going to cut 2% from here, we're going to cut 50% from here, we're going to cut, what does 10% equal? What does $10,000 equal as a percent?
I'm going to ask Paula the report that she has, what is the total?
I have this one. Revised budget for 2018, '19 is $197,000.
So, $10,000 from 100, if I'm doing quick math, it's, is that about 5% roughly?
Well, I think a huge amount of that total was, was graduation.
Consulting and. Well, so you can look at consulting, absolutely. You can look at consulting, you can look at legal, you can look, I mean, there's.
We have made cuts to consulting.
No, our consulting, like professional development.
Yeah, we've made some cuts to that.
Are the memberships in there as well? Like the.
Yep, memberships.
Okay.
So it'd be a point zero, it'd be a point five, you're not even at a full percent. If it's a $200,000 budget and you're talking $10,000.
Yeah.
1% would be $20,000.
He's an English teacher.
So it's half a percent, it's $10,000.
Sorry.
All right.
Oh. I just had to lighten up.
$10,000 off of $100,000.
She said $200,000.
So 10% of $100,000 is 20%.
Five percent.
So five, ten percent.
I'm a decimal now, 5%.
I'm an English teacher, but.
But it's the math that made that mistake.
I did take math.
My bad. I make mistakes as well.
She had to take a math test.
I had to take the ACT, I think.
I actually haven't seen that in a long time, so I figured one last shot, I'd get that one.
Hey, it's his last baby.
It'd be 5%.
So it's 5% of the board budget, and then you leave it up to the board to decide, up to the board to decide where the $10,000 or 5.
No, it's 5%. I didn't move the decimal to get the percentage up.
Any other? Director Pearson?
I feel like there's a lot in our budget that we don't control, that is graduation expenses and things that we don't, we can't say, like, we're going to cut $10,000 out of graduation. I feel like we don't have as much leeway in what we can do. I know the C in the AMSD, that's the big question, or our salaries, and it just, I feel like $10,000.
A question, could we get a copy of that sheet?
I think we.
So if you, if you would, if you would take graduation, which is 40, I think there's a 40 or 50, but let's just say we go from a $200,000 budget to a $150,000 budget, now a 40 or 50, but let's just say we go from a $200,000 budget to a $150,000 budget, now you're at 5%, you're talking $7,500.
Director, sorry, go ahead, yeah, go ahead. Shelley, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to make an amendment to make it $5,000 instead of 10.
Oh.
I don't want to.
I know.
Something specific, like let's correct.
See if somebody does.
Director.
Well, the amendment's out there first, so let's see.
Who's going to second that?
I'll second.
All right, Director Stivlin, Director Hattler, Hattler.
Yeah, I think I threw out at the last meeting, we also send a number of people to the winter conference for MSBA, which is costly. I've gone to that summer seminar over the last five or six years, that's costly. I mean, I think my, my point at the last one was, well, instead of sending four people to a summer seminar, could you send two? Instead of sending six to the winter conference, could you send, you know, I mean, there are some things like that that we go to that are costly, even though we belong to MSBA. There are things that, even though we belong to AMSD, I think if you go to the policy thing, you pay 30 bucks, or, you know, I mean, there are all those things as well, it's not just, you know, the salaries and the mileage. So, I mean, there are some things that you could do if you think we, as Paula said, should the board be willing to take a, I don't even know, a token something, because everybody else is being asked to.
Sure. All right, go ahead, Shelley.
Thank you. That's where I, I feel more comfortable starting at 5. We find more that we can shave off, but we are going to have three brand-new board members, and I don't know when the last time was we had three at one time, and they're going to need all that training and everything, so I just, I'm not comfortable saying 10, right, without us going through it. I'd like to start at 5.
Director Potajek?
Yeah, I think there's some other considerations. Number one, how much, Paula, how much is in there on food?
Food, um, let's see, $1,200?
Yeah, because I can't remember coming to many activities.
What food is?
Those are legislative breakfasts.
Legislative breakfast, or your world's best workforce, those are all.
Okay, so the food that's provided.
All staff?
All staff.
So that's a big.
Okay, but, all right, so maybe board members go and don't eat, or something like that, to bring down the cost. No, but my point is, is this, when you look at this, George, the part, excuse me, the part of going to conferences, whoever puts him on, and we're talking, for the most part, MSBA, but part of that, of sending people, I don't think people go there to have fun, because it's not.
Sure it is.
But I think they go, I think they go to learn, interact, network, all of those kinds of things, which are, to me, extremely important. So if you send one person, can you cover it? You bet. My point is, looking at some of my colleagues, who I think have been much more aggressive of taking advantage of it than I have in the past, for the last year or so, I looked around and said, hey, don't get left in the dust, they're coming back with valuable stuff, and valuable eyes are doing that, so I, I don't want to discourage that.
Director O'Laughlin?
I completely agree, and I think that it would be hypocritical for us as a board to say, we get access to all this professional development and learning, and to grow in our skill set, and not our teachers. So I think to have it, we're talking out of both sides of our mouth, I think if we're asking our teachers to do that with the absence of instructional coaches, PD conferences, even our admin staff, and, you know, capped all of that, then the board should also be looking at doing the same for ourselves.
The instructional coaches didn't win, they wiped out.
Can I ask, I have a question, is the, is EMED in 916 also included in that, in those figures, and if so, how much are those?
Members.
No, those are, those are not.
So that's separate?
Those are student services.
Okay, just was checking, okay, thanks, Director Stivlin.
Thank you. Can I ask, since you have a document, I mean, a couple of things, I agree, I think we can talk about this further, but we don't all have this document in front of us. What I was wondering is, could we just say, can we cut travel expenses? Oh, that would only be about $2,000. It's budgeted $2,500 so far, we're at $2,000.
I think we have amendment and then a motion on the table, I think we could go on those, and people can make amendments.
Right, yeah.
All right, let's, so let's take the vote for the amendment to cut 5,000 out of the board expenses. I'll raise your hand if you are in favor of that.
Aye, I'm in favor, aye.
Okay, those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries four to three. I'm sorry, the amendment carries four to three to do 5,000.
5%.
5,000.
In cuts to the board expense, it's 5,000.
Oh, should it be 5,000?
Okay.
So then, then, wait, the amendment passed.
Well, that.
So then.
It was originally 10,000, so the amendment trumped it.
So then, we don't have to do another, I think, okay.
Director Hattler?
To Mike's last point about professional development for board members, totally agree. I think all that's being said by, no matter what number we come up with, is, if I go to five things a year, maybe I'm going to be limited to three.
Right.
I mean, I'm not saying you wipe out, it'd be foolish to make a statement like that, but if, and I probably did go to five things last year, that costs, whether it's $30 or $250, okay, well, you can't go to five anymore, you can go to three, you pick your three. I know some boards still send people to national conferences, and we cut that out on our own, I think, over the last three, four, or five years.
Director Hattler?
This doesn't deal with that at all, but, except it does. The best education for us as board members, our frame of reference is when we went to school. And so when we judge programs, we sometimes think of what they were when we went. I'd like to see a requirement of every board member, sometime during the year, to spend a full day in a school that we serve, and talk to people, and learn what their issues are firsthand. Better than any conference we could go to, and it wouldn't cost us anything.
Thank you, that's a great idea, thank you very much. Director Potajek?
You know, I started off this by looking at consulting that we did in '17, '18, and we did have a board consultant that came in, and the cost was very, very close to $10,000. That's why I asked, where does it show up, whatever? If we don't do that this coming year, does that save us approximately $10,000 that we found in discretionary funds and dulled it to the board to put in there?
Can I just ask, so are we at, with that 5,000, at 1.5, we have 1.81?
1.08.
1.081.
One.
Okay. Okay, all right, we, you know, we have, we have, options are, propose additional cuts, our options are table until the new board takes over, our options are fund balance, use the remaining for the fund balance, I mean, this is our time to make our motions and get the job done, so.
So, can I ask a, procedural, did we then approve the $5,000?
The 5,000, yeah.
By voting for the amendment, we approved the main motion.
Yeah, I think we should have voted again, but I need to refer to my book.
Yeah, I don't know.
Here. And then you, and then you vote on the, am I having that party vote on Robert's rules?
You vote on the amendment, and then you vote on the motion.
And then you vote on the original motion?
As amended.
Might be right. Yep, we have one second. I almost got to the end of the year without any major Robert's rules issues here. Okay, yep, we do have to go to the original one. All right, so we're going to go to the original motion, and who made the original motion? Director O'Laughlin, I seconded that. Any more discussion on the $10,000?
Wait, so we're voting on the amendment?
For 5,000.
The amendment passed, so now we need to vote on the original motion as amended. Oh, to 5,000, right?
Okay, got it.
So if we want it to be the whole 10, we should have voted down amendment.
Yeah, so now we're voting.
Got it, okay, thank you for that, guys.
Amendment passed, so now we're voting on amended motion.
Okay, appreciate that. Okay.
So then you just need to restate it as amended.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Yep, but discussion first, of the original.
You want to go back to discussion of the original motion?
We can discuss.
Because I think you've put some choices out there. One, the board that's going to be the most directly affected by this is the incoming board. We're not, although I'm in both chairs, and many of you are. So my point is, I think we should give serious consideration to leave the 5,000 in there, but table it for the incoming board to take a look at.
I think that's the given, that the incoming board will decide where the 5,000 comes from.
Okay. Okay, so all those in favor of the, then, the original motion to cut 10,000?
No.
Sorry, I'm so sorry, you guys.
It's okay.
Amended 5,000 out of the board budget, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, you were, you were in a?
No, I voted for.
Motion carries five to two. Thank you very much for that patience and group, thank, all right. Director Pearson?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we table additional cuts until January 2019.
Okay, and that's seconded by Director Potajek? Any, any discussion, Director Stivlin?
So what does that mean exactly, table until January, are we, so we're saying that we're, we're not going to make any further cuts right now, we're going to wait until the new board is seated, and then we're going to have a meeting at some point and continue the conversation.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so I want to be, so if this passes, then, Shelley, your amendment is saying that.
Well, this isn't an amendment.
Sorry, your motion says that this current board, then, is not to make any more cuts.
Right, it's saying we're done today with the cuts, and then we'll move.
Okay, because what I don't want to happen, then, in the new year, is to say, well, three board members refuse to make the tough decision to cut 2.5 million, if the motion passes, because I'm prepared here to do our job of cutting 2.5 million. So I just want to make sure that I'm understanding that correctly.
So, well, let me ask a question, because it feels like we've been dropping things, not adding. We've added $5,000 and $25,000, so to cut another 1.4 million, do you have things in front of you?
I think that, and again, no good answers, but I think, again, this current board made the decision to spend money that we did not have. I think then we go to our savings, and then, instead of impacting and asking teachers and staff and students to have the impact of our decision.
Chair, if there's a potential of anything being put back on the board table that will impact staffing, that needs to be done no later than the end of January, for sure, because we're right up to, so if there's anything that, that people are anticipating, I just want to make sure that, keep it on the forefront, that we've got timelines that we're trying to, to make sure we keep for staff and for their.
Thank you, that was why I want to keep it, I don't want to kick it down months.
Right.
We need to keep it rolling.
I appreciate that, too. Can I?
Yep, go ahead.
And, I mean, you've given us an initial list, we've gotten feedback from teachers, from principals, from community members, taken a lot of stuff off the list, because we're like, no, we're not doing that. But, I mean, obviously, where do we go from here? Can we produce some additional ideas? I mean, where can we get, where are we going to go from here? We still have 1.5.
One thing that would be helpful as you move forward, and you brought it up earlier, Director Stivlin, would be to further define for us administratively, what is meant by keep it away from the classroom?
Yeah.
Right? Because just in today's conversation, some of it is kind of a gray area, at least as I'm hearing the conversation, of what, what you're considering close to the classroom, and what you're considering not close to the classroom, that would help from a guidance standpoint.
And maybe a couple of things for you to have a conversation about, new work coming on, is, just an example, is, Sarah, I understand what you say about the quality of our teacher and the relationship with the kids is super important, right? I agree with that. That's where I spent an hour talking about instructional coaches, that they help ensure that we have quality of teacher, and I'm not going to go through that again, spent an hour already, principal spent an hour sharing, we have feedback from SCEA, and I think we're just where we start seeing the results of it. The hard thing about an instructional coaching program is it doesn't start, none of our programming and educational organizations starts and you see the benefit right away. We've just gotten through the alignment of all of our systems, where we've had district goals with our world's best workforce, just recently finalized that we align with our school goals, our PLC goals, down to the teacher goal. And who makes that happen right now is your instructional coaches and Dev Van Clai through Q Comp. So that's one piece I'd like to have you have more conversation about. The other piece is, well, there's two more, actually, one is, new school board members will have their financial MSBA training in the middle of January, and some of our board members have said, when I first got on, there was a lot that I didn't know. So if you're going to make more decisions, I would urge you to have, wait until your new board members are able to go to that training, so that they have some more.
It's the 15th, January 15th or 16th, maybe?
More fundamental. And then the other piece is, we're talking a lot about budget reductions, remember that the board will be asked again, and every year is, on revenue with OPEB and Q Comp. And I've heard a lot of conversation about not wanting non-voter-approved levies, which Q Comp is one of those. Well, if you aren't going to do that, then having a conversation, you know, we can't sit down in good faith with our Q Comp board and our SCEA partners and say, okay, let's develop this, if that's not going to be part of the conversation. So there's a lot of things that link together that we need to make sure you have conversations about before.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions? So just, can I get a clarification, then, so when you, so tabling, and then I heard the comment of you want to have the additional cuts, that discussion and conclusion by the end of January?
It's really going to, if there's anything that comes up that's going to be a staffing type cut, and it happens after that January, we're really going to throw the process off.
So that means immediately after the MSBA training, in between that part of.
At least for the 1920 year, that doesn't mean, you know.
Right, yep.
For that, that following year.
I would just throw out there that the tentative second meeting in January would be the 17th.
Okay.
You'll approve your calendar, hopefully on the 3rd, at the organizational meeting, so the second meeting in January, board meeting, would be the 17th.
So that's MSBA conference, too? That's something, we just go to that all day and then come back and do a meeting?
Okay.
It's one day.
All right. All right. All those, all right, anything else? All those in favor of the motion and the second to table the rest of the cuts until the 2019, January timeframe? Yeah, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries five to two.
Can I ask a question, then? So.
Who were the two?
I think Don and Paula.
No, I thought Don voted for.
Or no, Don and Paula.
Did you vote against that one?
Yes.
Did you? Oh, you did.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
Gotcha.
So if there are additional things that we have, that we'd like considered, would you like them sent to you, so you can pass them on?
That would be great. Okay.
As far as new board members, because after the 1st, they can send that to you as well, so maybe a communication option.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for that. That's a great, that's a great idea. All right, we're going to, we're going to move on. I just want to make a quick comment. I have to leave, I made a commitment that I'm three hours late on, and I, so I've talked to Director Stivlin, who's graciously agreed to handle the rest of the meeting, and so I appreciate, I appreciate, I'm three hours late.
Oh, that's right.
So, so I want to thank Sarah for handling that for me very much, and, so again, you've got that.
I just want to interject, having new board members submit their ideas, would have to be after they're seated, on the 3rd.
Oh, on the 3rd, as opposed to January 1st, thank you for that.
You said the 1st, yeah.
Thank you for that clarification. So, so we are on to the budget.
Course additions.
Yep, we're on to course additions, and we add the disbursement. Director Hovland also has a statement that he'd like to make after we're finished, done, if that's okay.
Yes, I just want to, I just want to say, I want to tell you a little story that ties in with one of our votes on dealing with the YCAP program, that's my end story, but what I want to tell you is that I had the privilege of working 44 years in schools, and I never went home a day that I wasn't happy. That's what I want our staffs to feel. I think that, that the privilege of working with people and students should be our first priority our entire life. And what I learned by visiting all the schools, and spending time with all the principals and many teachers, was the tremendous respect that they have for all of you. And students would stop and ask. And students would stop and ask questions about how I felt about things. I think it's really refreshing to know what our, what our students and our teachers think of our schools, and we need to keep that in mind. I'm gonna, we didn't have suspension programs at Stillwater Junior High, we had in-school suspensions. Students spent either the day with me or with my assistant principal. My assistant principal, during our seventeen years, we worked together, only one student got by him, and he brought him, he brought that student to me and said, this student is yours, I'm not dealing with it anymore. And the student was a self-proclaimed Nazi, and was, I had five Jewish students in my school, in Stillwater Junior High School, he would put swastikas in their lockers. He wrote a paper for the English teacher, and it, she brought it to me, and she said, this paper is perfect in every manner except the content. And it dealt with the issue that Hitler had really messed up by not killing all the Jews. So I suspended him. I said, you're suspended? He said, oh, good, I get to go home. No, I said, you don't, you're gonna stay in my office, and I'm gonna find something for you to read. There was a book that is, deals with the world issues during World War Two and prior, and it dealt, a chapter dealt with the extermination of the Jews under Hitler's program. And I said, I want you to read that, and I'm gonna have lunch catered to you from the cafeteria, you're staying in this room all the time, and then we're gonna talk about this. And so, said, when you're all done, come back with me and we'll talk about it. So he came in, and he said, did this really happen? And I said, yes, it really did. How do you think these kids feel? Oh, he said, I won't do it again. And I said, can I go back to class now? And I said, no, I haven't decided what to do with you yet. So I, I contacted all the teachers, and said, are there any redeeming qualities? Five of them said, no. The sixth one, the art teacher, said, I've never had anyone as talented in art. And I said, well, find a contest for him to enter. Now, there is a God. The contest was sponsored by the Holocaust Museum in Washington, DC. He entered, he did a, an art project showing a fist, I should've brought it today, I didn't know, I wanted to talk about this today. Shows a wood carving with, with a fist with a swastika in the rest, and a flame, and the flame has little, has faces in it. And he titled it, The Torch of Sorrow. He entered it at the Holocaust Museum, there were over hundred thousand entries, he won first place. Won a lot of material for the library, and became a featured artist and illustrator for one of the major advertising companies in Minnesota, I won't mention it. But, the point that I'm making is, no matter what our differences might be, we, we have to focus on students, and I, I just really appreciate learning from this board this time, but I think we need to work to heal things and get together. And that's the end of my story.
Thanks.
Thank you for sharing that, Don.
Always inspiring to hear from Don. You could tell me stories every day, and I would never get bored. Thank you, Don. Okay, so next item on the agenda is Action Item C, course additions, revisions, and I will give the floor to Ms. Larson.
Thank you, Director Stilman, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board, good morning. I'm here to ask for final approval of the course changes and additions that were recommended and brought to you at the December thirteenth board meeting on behalf of the Curriculum Advisory Council, the Learning and Innovation Department, and District Administration. So at this time, I respectfully request your approval for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty course additions and changes.
I get a motion?
Second.
Second by Director Hovland, any questions?
I've got a question, 'cause there's like four or five different courses that have been added. That's an important step. Once a course is offered, how many students does it require to be offered, to actually be offered?
I don't remember that.
We, in the spring, they, the first, I believe, if I have it correct, it's twenty, is the number that the high school staff uses as its cutoff to run the course.
So if we had a course like online-winded biology or human, well, that would be a bad example. Let's call it human anatomy and medical terminology, if twenty students or more sign up, that will be offered.
Correct.
If it's less than that, they'll try to recruit a few more, but...
And to that point, that's the reason, when you see journalism in your book, and you see advanced video production, this got talked about a little bit at the last board meeting, but that's why those courses are being added, is because the level one course in itself may not get enough kids, but if they offer the two courses at the same time of the day, they'll get enough kids...
Combined class.
To combine the class and run the course.
And again, I'm under the assumption this is no additional financial impact.
That was the directive that we gave from our department, was you can, you can suggest courses, but it cannot have a financial impact for the next school year.
Yeah, and the only qualifier I would put on that, if it does have a financial impact in the future, just tell us what it's gonna be, or what it's anticipating.
And that is part of the request process that is vetted by the building administration and our department as well, before it even is brought to the Curriculum Advisory Council. Is there a cost expenditures on that that they have to report as part of the consideration?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, can we have a vote? All in favor of adding the recommendation, recommend the courses? Say aye.
Aye.
Against? Okay, motion carries unanimously.
Thanks for sitting here all day.
All day, all day. All right. The next item is Item D from the consent agenda, the dispersment report, I think Director Patachek has some questions.
Yes, I do, thank you. And I think Kristin, Kristin and I met a couple days ago, went through this, and some of those I'm not gonna ask again, because I found out things that didn't cause me to do them. So, if you wanna follow along in your register of dispersments, these are the pages, first of all, going to page one, and if you look under B and B Electric, Lake Elmo, and roughly three questions that I had there, and they're really three separate items. One is a replace the front outside poles and lights at Lake Elmo, twenty-one thousand three hundred ninety-one. And the second one is to replace rear outside lighting and building lighting, eighteen thousand four hundred seventy-three. And then the third one had to do add ceiling projector receptacles and move outside GFI, and that cost on that was five thousand five hundred eighty-eight dollars. So, I will let Kristin reply, but I'd also ask that part of my question was, were these plans expected or part of long-range maintenance plan?
Thank you. We talked, or when I spoke last week, and it was regarding the high school lighting and the question had come up, and I said, we had, in the long-range plan or the ten-year facility, or the ten-year plan for long-term facility maintenance, the high school wasn't identified, they have electrical work identified, but the high school wasn't, and it was in the amount of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. This is actually the opposite. Lake Elmo was identified and, and part of the board-approved plan, ultimately, so it will be coming out of, out of long-term facility maintenance, the poles were rusting off, we saw this coming, we repaired, or we replaced them.
Yeah, and, and part of my point in picking this one out in particular, 'cause there's others that have had it, but not as much, is that realize that Lake Element, or Lake Elmo Elementary, we have a significant investment here, and this represents really a much, much smaller part, but at the same time, we're talking about roughly about forty-five thousand dollars, so it's important. On page two, if you look to George Siegfried, it looks like construction, Oakland Middle High School, or Middle School, replaced sidewalk, and it was twelve thousand dollars, a little bit over that, not much. And again, the question is, what was done, and was this planned or expected or part of long-range maintenance?
So this wasn't planned. What I'd like to do is, I believe all of you have been to Oakland at least a handful of times, and if you think of the area where the buses drop off, not the pool entrance, but the entrance that's essentially middle of the building, outside of that, there was at one time, back in the day, a student project, and they ultimately laid pavers, or what would be similar to pavers. Those pavers heaved and became a tripping hazard, and so we don't ever like to undo a student project, but when it becomes a safety element, you have to, and so we put concrete down.
Thank you. The third item has to do with additional charge by Larson Engineering at the high school, the traffic study, twenty-nine hundred dollars. And again, my curiosity, have we reached any conclusions from these studies? Are there more to come?
And my response to Mike was, we have reached conclusions, and we will be looking with the high school staff. Again, it's one thing to have an engineer design a flow, and it's another for implementation of the people that actually have to work that site day in and day out, and so as we look through options of what Larson has presented us for what we might be able to do with the, with the parking lot and the flow through traffic, what does the high school staff think about that? What does that look like as far as a security measure, a safety measure, and we just want, so we have Larson's analysis, we'll be moving that forward to conversations with the high school staff.
And Larson Engineering also did a study on the bus facility site evaluation, and the cost of that one was a little bit over seventy-nine hundred dollars.
Correct, and this continues to work through the city of Lake Elmo, as far as comments and design, and what they are requiring as far as the layout.
The layout of the flow of, of traffic, et cetera.
Correct.
Okay. And then the very last one I have is the pager, is that, am I saying that right? Graphics, it's on page four, and it has to do with Lake Elmo, and it's to replace the monument, and I think there's a quote there of a little bit over eight thousand dollars.
Correct. So we have, and I, and I might lean on Krista a little bit, because she's probably gonna have a better idea of when this started, I think, and I'm thinking it was a rebranding thing, but we have monument signs, even as you pull into CSB, the brick with the pony logo says, this is Stillwater Schools. We have that outside of our building, we have that outside of Anderson, we have that at the high school, our middle schools all have it. In an effort, and it's been years coming since the rebranding movement, was to be able to provide a monument sign to all of our sites. Essentially, where in the priority focus came on those sites first, that are on, kind of on major thoroughfares, if you will, they just have a higher density of traffic. Lake Elmo is obviously one, Anderson is obviously one, like Rutherford's a little bit more tucked in, Stonebridge is a little bit more tucked in. But in that effort to go back to what this initial movement was, is to get monuments, monument signs outside of each building, this would be, this would be a piece of that. We would be adding a monument sign to Lake Elmo, they did have a blue wooden sign that has since corroded and has been removed, and we'd be looking to add this. And it has been at the request of our principals as well, but I'll turn it over to you if you want to say anything.
This has been something I remember working with Denny when I first started, that we wanted to brand all of our schools, so when people drive by, they know that not only this is an elementary school, this is a Stillwater area public schools elementary school, and that it has a nice prominent sign in front of it. So, we've been doing that as we can, you know, my, Jetha's, I was on Denny's case all the time about making it happen faster, it's been ten or more years in the making, and we're still not there, but it's just adding this as we can.
How many schools do we have that it's not?
That doesn't have the, the way it looks, we have Rutherford doesn't, Stonebridge doesn't, Afton doesn't, and Lake Elmo...
Now does.
Well, they will. Yeah, it's in, it's in process now, so, again, they...
They say they're red and white signs, is that...
Yeah, yes, yes.
Okay, thank you, those are my questions.
So, I think we need to have a motion to approve the dispersment register from December fifteenth through the twenty-first. All in favor? Oh, wait, motion, sorry.
I'll second.
All right, so motion by Director Pearson, second by Patachek, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion carries. All right, I think we're done.
Meeting adjourned.
Meeting adjourned.